Children's scrutiny meeting, just a few announcements to start if you don't mind. Just to remind those online to make sure that you've got your muted and turn off your camera unless you're speaking. Just a reminder to us all that the meeting is being live streamed. All speakers are asked to ensure they are talking into their microphones. Did I do that then? Reminder for attendees to address councillors by their full name. There is no fire alarm today, so if it does sound, it's for real. And we will be to congregate on the Cova lawn, which is over that way. Okay. And apologies, I have received apologies from councillors Connor and Bell. And councillor Hayward is joining us online, I think, not there yet. But okay, no, any further apologies, I think that's full house. On councillor Horner's online. And obviously, you know, we're a very new committee, we've got two new members, so welcome to councillor Russell and councillor Barry to the committee. Their first time with us this morning, so. Morning Paul, it's frightening sight. There we are. The big screen in front of me is, I'm sure it's fine that way. You missed a bit about keeping your camera off unless you're speaking councillor Horner. Thank you. Declarations of interest. Obviously, probably none at this stage, but if one comes up during the committee meeting, please do indicate. Minutes, minutes of the meeting held on the 15th of September for approval only. Are you all happy that I signed them as a correct record? Thank you, shall I do that? I'll do that at the end as we can move along smoothly then. Okay, thank you. Items require urgent attention, don't believe there were any. Chair's announcements, similarly, I have none. Public participation, again, I have been no notification of any representations. Responses of the Cabinet to reports of the committee, I don't believe there are any this month, but nothing that either councillor Jeffries or Bickley wanted to raise outside of the. Thank you. So item eight is the scrutiny work programme. Louise, do you want to do this now or should we wait till the end?
To you chair, I can do it now.
Let's do it now and we don't forget.
We'll pop it at the end for the next meeting if that's helpful.
Send it thumbs up during the meeting.
We can sort that out, yeah. So scrutiny work programme, members will have in their diaries a masterclass on elective home education and the role of the virtual school for the 25th of November. There's been a request to postpone that, we've discussed with the chair, we'll postpone it, but the chair will have a meeting with lead officers in the interim period, so expect an update date in your diary soon. Our, the next meeting of the committee is in January, the date. Date fails me right now, I failed to remember the 22nd, 22nd of January, there's lots of, there's three scrutiny committees in January. 22nd of January, that is a full day members, so you will have the budget for, we had the budget setting at 26, 27 in the morning and then in the afternoon will be an ordinary meeting of the committee. Currently on the agenda is the children's social care performance report and transformation. The Ofsted monitoring visit report, an update on the champion, from the champions against domestic violence and sexual abuse and any reports of the committee from visits and standing overview groups held in the interim. Officers are working on visits with with the teams, so we should have some dates out to you in due course. Obviously, we'll update it after this meeting as well. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you Louise, any questions members on that? Okay, remember we're here anytime if you've got things you want to raise between meetings and want us to consider for the work programme, please do approach me or the officer team. Thank you. So on to the main body of the of the meeting, so matters for consideration or review. Item nine, inspection of local authorities' children's services or ELAX. Progress against recommendations, so welcome councillor Jeffries. And you've got. Yeah, it's Becky, isn't it, that's assisting you, I was thinking Julian's dying, but yeah, so welcome. Welcome to Becky Hopkins and Richard, I don't know who's going off first.
Want me to go? Thank you Chair. I won't go into too much detail, what we've presented today is our Families First Children's Social Care Plan, which covers all of the recommendations made in the Ofsted inspection that took place in October 2024. The plan also accommodates all of our transformation programmes, so the National Families First reforms and our in-house growing futures transformation programme, which we talked about in some depth at the last scrutiny committee in September, the plan also contains our own self-assessment information, so within that is everything that we know about ourselves in terms of the improvements that we need to make. So you can see it's quite a lengthy plan, there's a lot going on in there, it does, as I say, cover the Families First reforms in terms of early intervention and safeguarding, and it's absolutely aligned to those reforms. Chapter two covers our workforce and our plans to continue to achieve a more permanent workforce, we talked last time about the progress that we're making in that area and that does continue. Chapter three is quality assurance and performance, that is how we know that we're making the improvements that we need to make, it's how we close that loop in terms of feedback from children and children and their families and what we know about our own practice from our quality assurance activity. And finally, chapter four is about homes for children, which is our growing futures programme and how we ensure that we've got sufficient homes for Devon children in Devon, so that we're not having to place them far away from the people that they know and love and their communities and their education provisions, so we continue to work on that plan as a service. I can get, Vicky and I are able to give you a little bit of detail if helpful on the, on update in terms of the six ILAX recommendations that came out as of the inspection. Would you like us to go into a little bit of detail?
Sorry councillor Hookway, great to see you, but can we ask you to turn your camera off? And yes, please Becky.
Yeah, okay, so we had six recommendations that came out of the ILAX inspection in October 2024. The first one was our response to children who are at immediate risk of harm, including the timeliness of strategy discussions, so they're the meetings that take place when we've got concerns that children are likely or have suffered significant harm. So we've continued work within the service, we've revised our guidance in relation to child protection processes in relation to strategy discussions in particular. What we know from our quality assurance information is that we have improved the timeliness of those conversations about children who are our most vulnerable and who we're most concerned about. And we are seeing an increased improvement in timeliness, Vicky and her team continue to quality assure that work on a regular basis so that we can keep a really close eye on that. We know that our recording of that decision-making continues to strengthen, including how we record our decision-making rationale, that was one of the findings from the Ofsted inspection. And we are increasingly including the voices of children within those meetings and within those conversations with partners, so that we can make sure that we're making the right decisions and the right plans for them. Another recommendation was the quality and impact of plans for children and care leavers to meet their needs. We know that we continue to improve permanence outcomes for children, particularly those who might be being adopted or remain living within their families, within their families under various different legal frameworks, so we continue to see an increased number of children placed within their families on a permanent basis in Devon. We continue to work collaboratively with our care experienced people and with our children and families to make sure that plans are co-produced with them. And I can share that we did receive some positive verbal feedback from the Ofsted inspectors during the monitoring visit last week in relation to that, so they were able to see the evidence of that. And we continue to work with our sector-led improvement partners around our care planning, so our Essex colleagues, for example, have been delivering a number of care planning workshops across the system. And one of the key aspects of the Families First reforms is family-led decision-making, so we have a strand of work within our Families First plan that you may have seen, which is around family-led planning. So we have a whole work stream around that, but again, it's been supported by Essex and involves the growth of our family group conferencing service in Devon, so that we can make sure that all children and families are offered that opportunity for a family group conference during their journey with us. I'm just going to hand over to Vicky for the recommendation around risk and response to neglect domestic abuse and extra familial harm, and then I'll pick up on the final three after that.
Thanks Becky, so one of the other recommendations was how are we responding to risk around neglect, domestic abuse and extra familial harm? In September 24, alongside the Children's Social Work Academy, we launched a series of immersive and interactive conferences to train our entire workforce in terms of recognising and responding to neglect. We've also worked closely with the Children's Safeguarding Partnership to review our neglect strategy, which has now also been launched, and that's a multi-agency strategy owned by the Safeguarding Children's Partnership. Within that, there is a toolkit that has been developed and the partnership have also delivered best practice events to the multi-agency partnership and our members in terms of using the toolkit to not just equip children's services, but also the wider partnership in being able to respond and recognise neglect. In terms of strengthening our approach to domestic abuse, so in April 2025, we followed the same model as with the neglect conferences and launched a series of, again, immersive and interactive conferences, we use an acting company who bring real life scenarios to life in front of the attendees. More recently, we've actually opened up that domestic abuse assessment training to our partners as well. Actually, the most recent conference took place this week and we had representatives from police and education and health partners also in the room, which I think really added a richness to some of the discussions. We do continue with our thematic quality assurance work to check on the progress and check on the impact that these changes and these training events and workshops are having. And there is a thematic review planned in December, which will focus on neglect, so that will tell us how we're doing and whether what we are teaching people is really embedding in practice. And again, we will complete one in February focusing on domestic abuse, which will do the same. We have strengthened our safety planning through embedding IDVs, which are independent domestic violence advocates across the service, firstly within our children and families, so longer-term services and more recently in the front door as well, so they can bring with them their expertise and knowledge around safety planning for those that are victims and survivors of domestic abuse. We've also enhanced our approach to domestic abuse with the launch of the Devon Domestic Abuse Alliance. And we have engagement at assistant director level with the intergender-based violence and abuse board. I will just take the opportunity to say that the 16 days of action begin on Monday, which is to raise awareness around stopping domestic abuse and violence towards women and girls. And we have also developed an exploitation strategy and that was signed off by the partnership at the business group yesterday.
Thanks Vicky, and then the the final three recommendations from the ILAX in September, October 2024. The fourth one was the assessment of risk and safety planning for care leavers. So just some of the updates of work that's happened there, I'm really pleased to be able to say that we don't currently have any care experienced people in bed and breakfast accommodation in Devon. That has been the position now for the last few months, which is really, really positive and was positively acknowledged again during our monitoring visit last week. As part of our work to make sure that we we keep our care experienced people as safe as possible, we've strengthened our line of sight, so we have a forum where we track planning for those young people. We have a therapeutic wellbeing service that's been established over the last 12 to 18 months. And our care experienced people talk about the benefits of that and how that has really helped them in terms of their mental health. We have a custody forum where we monitor what's happening for our care experienced people who are in custody and and as they're released from custody to make sure that we have appropriate plans in place. And we have much more centralised housing support now, we have care experienced housing workers and education, training and employment workers who sit centrally within our service that enables us to deploy that resource where it's needed, and we have seen an increase in care experienced people accessing education, training and employment over the last six months. And we've also provided some really specific training for the for the care leaving service, so we've accessed training from the Rees Foundation around how we support care leavers in custody, so we've really, really tried to focus in that area and also I guess in terms of care leavers, we've had a real focus on suitable accommodation for them, there is still work to do, but the numbers of our care leavers in unsuitable accommodation is significantly reduced, I think we have 96, or it might even be 98% of care experienced people now in suitable accommodation. So that's really, really positive and a huge improvement for us in Devon, but like I say, that's not still, not to say there's still more to do. The fifth recommendation was the availability and support of sufficient homes for all of our children in Devon. I won't go into detail there because, as I mentioned before, we went into detail about the growing futures transformation programme at the last scrutiny committee, that work continues in terms of our, you know, the work that we'll be doing to build more children's homes within Devon and also extend our foster carers offer so that hopefully we can recruit more foster carers over the coming months, because we know that they're the key to providing the right environment for the children that unfortunately can't remain within their families. And then finally, the sixth recommendation was in relation to management oversight and the effectiveness of supervision across the service. We have locality panels across all of the three localities now to strengthen line of sight on decision-making for children. Our performance in relation to up-to-date supervision has improved, it was at 86% last month, that is an improvement over the, over the last six months and we will continue to work on that. We are seeing improved quality of supervision and management oversight in the service through our quality assurance activity. We've got a programme of work ongoing for all of our practitioners and managers to continue to strengthen supervision and management oversight and really impress the importance of that, obviously, around decision-making and also being able to evidence our decision-making for children and their families, and we continue to work with our sector-led improvement partners around that piece of work, so those are the six recommendations that came from the ILAX inspection, as I say, they're all accommodated within that Families First plan. Thank you.
Donna, did you want to add anything?
Just add in that my responsibility is to make sure the system around our children's services is working well together and all strategic partners, and we have another report at scrutiny about that today. So in relation to that, I do think there is a consideration about how scrutiny has line of sight on the responsibilities of our partners and that's maybe something we need to take away. There is no doubt for me that in every layer of detail, information, quality improvement within the council, that I am assured and confident that the inadequate children's services tanker has finally turned and we are motoring well on that journey to good. And I want to publicly state that the monitoring visit, the way that the Ofsted inspectors came to our council a few weeks ago and the way they engaged with our staff was positive, constructive and often exceptional standard, and I think it's important to state that in terms of the new Ofsted team that we have working with us as we go through an improvement journey. I want to commend their conduct, their ethos and also a very good, robust but constructive process as inspection should be. I also want to note that for all of LGR and the challenges, that we have been in the room with our council colleagues across Devon, because the Homes For Children is a joint responsibility as corporate parents. And we have a further meeting in December and that we're very much focused on working together on improving our children's services. I actually had a discussion with one of our district key chief executives this morning, who works in partnership with me on that agenda, we're very committed to that. So I just want to make it public that it was a very good meeting across all the councils, very focused on how we improve, so it's really important to say that our district colleagues, our housing partners are working really well with us and it's important to commend that today. The final piece I would say though that I am concerned about is that in terms of our children's services and delivering your ambition that you've all publicly stated, and that is that journey to outstanding now, is that we need our police and our health colleagues right by our side. And I am a bit concerned about some of the national structural changes that are now impacting upon the ICB. And I think there's a discussion about how we have line of sight to make sure that our police and health colleagues have the right supports and context and ingredients around about them, because the reforms that are being set over the next few years can only be delivered with strong multi-agency partnership working. We have the support and commitment of our whole council on this, but we need our partners and these other agencies to have that support. And I am concerned with my colleagues nationally that some of the changes in the NHS are not helping our colleagues to be focused on the work that they want to do, and that's not to say operationally, locally staff are working together, but we need such strategic leadership and support at board level and at senior level to have that in place, so perhaps I just think it's important to note that concern today. And perhaps for us to think about how we address that, I can see that the the leader of the council has been very supportive and on the deputy leader and how we're going to plan to engage with the NHS, but for that ambition to be delivered, we need strong partnership working. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, so yeah, thank you to Vicky, Becky and Donna for those contributions. I think it would be really useful, we're all pretty much exclusively new to children's scrutiny, and I think I think it would be really useful to have a training session probably on how we work with partners and how we can scrutinise them, so perhaps we could put some together on teams to, sort of, early in the new year to look at that specifically. Getting some nods to my right, so that, so that's good. What was the other thing I was going to say, yeah, the other thing I was going to talk about was that we talked about neglect, so seven of the members of this committee have signed up for the neglect conference. There's three other spaces left, so if anybody's thinking, I'd like to know more about that, please contact Lou and she'll she will give you all the details around that, so that, but that's a fantastic response actually on that.
Chair, I would just say they are excellent conferences, aren't they Vicky, and we have, they're very interactive, aren't they, we have an acting team that come in and work with us as part of that conference, so we'd definitely recommend it to anybody who is interested.
Well, I'll go to members first, while I unload you of my questions, but I want one very quickly while it's fresh in my mind, if that's right, because you must have preempted my mind, I'm looking at page 21, F31 and continue to work with districts to embed zero tolerance to the use of bed and breakfast. Yeah, it's only ranked amber, so I was sort of, my question would have been, how many are we hiring? Bed and breakfast, you've told me nil, so I sort of, I'm worried that it's still amber and does that mean that you're not happy that all the districts have got an embedded plan should somebody come forward?
I think we still have work to do in terms of making sure that we have we have that supply of suitable accommodation, so that when our care experienced people might find themselves in a really difficult situation, that we have got somewhere for them to go and we don't have that across Devon at the moment, so it is about making sure that we've got sufficiency of accommodation options for them, so that we don't even have to be having the conversations, I think we've really moved forwards as a partnership around our approach to our care experienced people and making sure that we do avoid bed and breakfast in all circumstances. But there are still some really difficult emergency situations where we might still need to use bed and breakfast for a night or two, not in the way that we have done previously in Devon, but it is still a risk. So when, it's that, we're not there yet.
No, I mean, it's great that you said none, I mean, I was sort of expecting to uncover, you know, horror stories of some, you know, we hear families, don't we, for instance, that that do end up in bed and breakfast for far too long times and not children on the road.
Yeah, absolutely, and in order to avoid using bed and breakfast, we are using short-term lets at the moment, which isn't, you know, that's still not the ideal solution, it is suitable, but it's not the ideal solution, because what we want is much more kind of longer-term options, so that we're not having to move those young people around.
You sparked me off now, because obviously that's good, but then I'm conscious that we're in the winter months and we're tourism areas, so is the challenge much more in that holiday season, if you like, or the?
Yeah, absolutely, it's always more challenging in holiday season.
So I'm glad, in that case, I'm glad it's still there as amber, and we're not sort of confident that we're not just pushing these KPIs up.
That's right, and we still need to have those challenging conversations amongst ourselves as partners at times to make sure that we're making the right decisions.
Oops, sorry, I've hold it for long enough. Councillor Tillsley, followed by councillor Treil, I'm quite happy to go with two questions there and then I'll come to councillor Lodge.
Thank you very much Chair, thank you very much for your self-assessment, it's excellent and I've, my eyes drawn to the red ones, obviously. Could I just get a little bit more information about F22 on page 24, I believe, just about completing supervision? Managers completing supervision and the why it was given a red rating and what actions are happening to bring it back into a better colour, and similarly on G24, if we go forward a few pages. What the, what Chair was just talking about, about working with our district colleagues, we've got a red rating there for working with our district colleagues on suitable housing. Just those two red ones, just a little bit more information, I've got more questions, but I don't want to hog the microphone, thank you very much.
I can certainly come in and answer in terms of the supervision, management oversight and supervision. I think it's fair to say we've had a really relentless focus on this, probably for the last 18 months actually, but it grows and grows and grows. Because really, it's the cornerstone to everything that we do in children's services, we won't get to good without good management oversight and supervision. The reason it's red, and actually I think it has been more recently updated to amber, but this is not, has not updated with my most recent update, is because we're actually, we were continuing to wait for the commissioner's assessment as well. And additionally, we have now recently formed a relationship with Dave Basker, who is an expert in terms of management oversight and supervision within the world of social care. So we are in planning stages with Dave to further roll out a sort of suite really of training and workshops for all of our managers. Additionally, we are working with our Essex colleagues with their connection, Dr Barbara McKay, to also roll out some systemic leadership training. So the reason it's red at the moment, or I think it's just recently moved to amber, is because we are still in process and progress, so we haven't completed all of the training. And not every manager has yet completed it, so I didn't feel it was, although there's a lot in place and we've done a lot, I didn't feel it was a true representation to change that to green or blue at this stage, because there's still also so much more in the pipeline. I think we've reached the point where we're now being ambitious, so we're taking things a step forward, we've certainly done all of the basics. And we have a monthly meeting for all team managers upwards, which focuses on oversight and supervision and their roles and responsibilities, but we know we can take it a step further, so that's why it's not reflected as green or blue.
I think, I think just to add to that, the other key factor that impacts here is permanent workforce, so permanent social workers, permanent team managers will really enable us to embed good quality and frequent supervision and management oversight, and whilst that continues to improve on a weekly basis, we've still got more work to do to make sure that we've got a permanent layer of team managers who we can then engage in our training and our way of working in Devon and hopefully have that much more consistent approach.
Thank you, and I thank you for the prompt and direct answers as well, so let's keep to that form members and councillor Treil.
Thank you very much Chair, and thank you very much for your reports. You pinched my questions, didn't you, just watching my notes. I was going to ask the same questions, however, I've got two more. Firstly, the family hubs across Devon, have we got a list of those hubs and have we actually visited them lately? Because I do believe we may have one missing, which is in Exmouth, which is Brixton community free church, I have asked somebody to go there and have a look. And secondly, I would concur with the Chair about the training or workshop, but I'd also like to go a step further, because I think it was two years ago, this committee actually went upstairs. this committee actually went upstairs and sat down with the staff up there. It was a really, really good opportunity to speak to all the staff and see what their issues are and how this committee could help them. Because they do work extremely hard under extreme conditions. Thank you.
I'll just jump in before we get the answer because I'll pick up on the visits because I think you've sort of sparked me. So which is good. I think, you know, can't say, you know, please, please do get out and visit people. Whether it be schools, whether it be family hubs, whether it be local staff teams, social, social work teams. Obviously, don't turn up on announce, but please arrange to go and visit those teams all over the county because we do need and feedback, you know, through Louise and Matts so that we can sort of understand where, you know, there can often be a different picture in parts of this huge county of ours to others. So I think, you know, and like you say, I think the team have been arranging for us to come in here as a group and go upstairs. I've certainly never done it here. But yeah, so please do any, anything that involves young people and children, if you think there's an opportunity locally to to go. I mean, I think the one that I would like to raise is, is, you know, the suitable accommodation. I would personally like to go and see if I would find that suitable for my own child, for instance. So I, you know, I'd like a list of I don't expect, obviously, that's not public, but certainly like to understand what accommodation is in in Devon and in particular in my area. So back to the answer.
Thank you. councillor Trail will pick up that observation around family hubs and just make sure that that's that information is accurate. And I did just want to pick up, I think we missed councillor Tillsley's question about G twenty four, which councillor Trail was obviously also interested in as well. So if that's okay, I'll just hand over to Daniel to respond to that.
So in terms of providing suitable housing arrangements for our young people of care experience, working with districts is crucial as the responsibility around social tendencies and housing sits to some extent with them. So we're working really hard on developing those partnership arrangements. We have really good examples of innovative work jointly with districts where we are supporting young people with complex needs. So for example, Southhames, we have a regular panel to scrutinise and ensure we've got oversight of all young people where we don't think there's a robust housing option in place. And this morning, we were talking about a really good example of where Southhames have come up with a really innovative solution to support that young person into a housing arrangement. The challenge is we don't have nearly enough housing to meet the level of need. So we've done modelling over the last six months with an external partner in power to ensure we have a really good understanding of the number of homes we're going to need for our care experienced young people. We feel that based on that modelling, which we've worked with districts to both develop and share. Every year, we have around about a hundred young people who need some level of tenancy from from who have previously been children in our care. Last year, just over thirty were supported through Devon Home Choice and that reflects the pattern the year before. So we're we're not meeting the level of need which is coming through. Some of that is about the policies and processes which were in place, which sometimes restricts some of our children, care experienced young people. So for example, there are policies which make it very hard through social tendencies in Devon, support young people who've been in custody. And we need to think about how the policies support our young people, particularly those with overlapping and complex needs. But we also need to come up with creative ways where we go find a hundred homes a year with districts. Understandably, that's a real challenge. We want to work in partnership with districts to do that. But some of that has to be led by districts because they have the housing responsibility. We've offered to develop joint bids with to try and look at how we would increase the housing stock, both in the with private partnership and also in terms of social tenancy arrangements. There are some districts which are keen to develop those offers, but I think the key reason it's red is we have no firm plan which we could put our name next to and say we're assured that that's in place across the districts and particularly given we've got acute pressures around our young people who want to be housed in Exeter and the east of Devon, how we robustly work with those districts to ensure we can meet need. It's a really significant challenge. We're continuing the conversations. We don't, we don't have a solid plan with districts as yet.
Thank you. I think I've got councillor Lodge and councillor Julian next to him. Sorry. Oh, let's let's keep it in sequential, if you don't mind, councillor Lodge. Top, go with councillor Richardson, then we'll work our way down, if that's all right. Much easier for me to manage.
Thank you, Chair, and apologies to councillor Lodge for coming in. It's really good to hear about engaging with other councils in Essex is one that's been mentioned a couple of times. So if it's all right, I'd just like to hear a bit more about the rationale for why Essex is a county that we've been asking lots of questions of. And perhaps if you could give us a few of the highlights of what we've learnt from Essex, please, that'd be great. Thank you.
So within the children's social care world, there are a number of local authorities that are identified as sector-led improvement partners across the country. So Essex are one of those. A number of us who are in Devon now have worked with Essex when we've worked for other local authorities in terms of the improvement journey, and that has been really, really helpful. Essex are obviously a very large county, so that works for us in terms of thinking about how we manage and how we make sure that we develop a consistent service in somewhere as large as Devon with the differences that we have across the county. We do also work with Hertfordshire and more recently Dorset as well. So we are working with a number of different local authorities and then also we're in contact, you know, with with other local authorities outside of those formal arrangements. So we're very much taking an outward looking approach to our work in Devon to make sure that we're learning from those authorities that are good and outstanding and that compare to us in terms of the way that they're doing things and the way that they're set up. So our work with Essex started back in January twenty twenty four. And it involved a number of diagnostics across the service. So they came into many of our sort of operational teams, the front door, the assessment and intervention service, our children and families teams and our children in care teams and did some diagnostic work to really help us understand what some of those gnarly issues are that we really need to get a grip of in Devon. So they did that. And out of that came a number of recommendations and actions that we have sort of scooped up in various iterations of this plan and our work along the way. But Essex, and then following on from that, what Essex have continued to do is deliver workshops around specific programmes such as care planning work, life story work, family-led decisions. So how our social workers work with families to enable them to make their own decisions within a safe space. They take part in our staff conferences. So they come and deliver with us as part of the team. So they very much kind of become part of our team and the service gets to know them well. And there's that trust and confidence in that way of working. And it's the same for our Hertfordshire colleagues who've been very much focused on our front door work. And then Dorset County Council have recently engaged with us around the Families First reforms because they are a national pathfinder. So they're, I guess, leading the way in terms of that work. So I hope that helps.
Thank you. Interestingly enough, Becky and Thomas, myself and the vice chair visited Barnsville. And as I remember, there was a we got chatting to a social worker there who actually came to work for us from Essex. And I think his comment to us was, I can't believe that Essex are outstanding in Devon, you know, deemed as failing because they feel the same to me. So it was quite an interesting comment.
Thanks. I've got a couple of questions, actually. Is that okay to ask to councillor Julian? Thanks. I'll do them one at a time so it's easier to handle. The Children's Social Care and Families First Plan, a great document, but I noticed there's no versioning control on it. And we're not aware of the date of the last review. From what Vicky said, this is probably out of date that we're seeing anyway. So how do we know that this document's up to date?
So I can confirm that the document was updated at the point just prior to the monitoring visit. So it's up to date. It would have been updated in October. So it is very much live. And I think, Vicky, what you're talking about is is a really recent update in terms of the work that we've got going on around supervision and management oversight. However, that is really helpful feedback that we make sure that we've got version control contained in here.
Yeah, just to say, all of us have leads for particular strands within this plan. And we meet monthly with the person who is in control of the versions. I only met with him last week to provide that update, which is why it's not within the version that you've got. But it is the most up to date. He will now update again with all of the monthly meetings for November.
Okay, thanks. I think it'd be helpful to have that version control actually on the document so that everybody knows what they're reading. So perhaps that's an area for improvement. My second question is in relation to D eight, which is care experienced young people in custody. Donna said it, and I know we're going to touch on this later on today, but there is a partnership problem, particularly for care experienced young people, including evictions. This document states that positive partnership working is an enabler. So what steps are being taken to strengthen relationships with specifically the CPS, the police, probation services and the courts? And I think I'm right in thinking that there are more care experienced young people in custody than at university. Is that correct? Or is that a fallacy?
That, that was the situation during the I L A X inspection in October twenty twenty four. It's no longer the situation now. So we have thirty thirty six care experienced young people in university in Devon. We have eight care experienced people in custody. The number of care experienced people in custody has reduced over the last twelve months. And our work in relation to working with those young people to make sure that they do have suitable plans and that we stay in contact with them whilst they're in custody and in, you know, upon their release has strengthened. That was recognised in the verbal feedback during the monitoring visit last week. So that was really, really positive. We continue to work with our partners. So for example, one of the issues that we've had is around plan, accommodation plans changing at very short notice when care experienced people are released from custody. And that's around a lack of availability of approved premises nationally. So we are in touch with the probation service around that. We have escalated that in respect of four of our care experienced people. So we're being really proactive around those issues. We have probation in attendance at our custody review forum now. And that is a partnership forum. So we have representatives from other agencies there as well. So we're really working to kind of, to make sure that we come together. That's not to say that there's not still more work to do. But we know where those issues are and we know, you know, what we need to do about it. Thank you.
Happy. councillor Julian.
Thank you, Chair. Just when you lovely report about abusive behaviour, which you've got the agencies involved like the police and N H S, whatever. But you haven't mentioned, which I think is really, I have spoken to police about it, they're not really touching on the controlling and abusive behaviour that is being going on and psychological abuse, which is really important because it has affected mainly women with their children, that it is really getting on top of them and they're breaking down. And breaking down in the family unit is is, you know, what we're after, is to try and sort of prevent that. But it hasn't been mentioned. And I wondered if you are getting on top of this because the police do need to be on board with this. I just wonder. Thank you.
No, absolutely. And I couldn't agree more. Our domestic abuse assessment framework is called that. So it's called domestic abuse. But within it, what it helps our practitioners to do is identify the typologies. So that also includes coercive and controlling behaviour. And also typologies like situational couple violence as well. So it's not, we're not just talking about high risk, physical domestic abuse. It also very much covers coercive and controlling behaviour. So we have tools and we have an assessment framework in which to assess the level of risk that is posed as a result of that. So that is also then demonstrated within the training that we do. So there is a particular scene that demonstrates what coercive and controlling behaviour can look like and the impact that that has on the child who's involved in that situation and exposed to those behaviours. So we are covering that off within our training and within our assessment framework. So now that partners are on board and attending that, then absolutely our police colleagues will be exposed to the same assessment pathway that we use in children's, which absolutely covers that off.
Of course you can briefly.
That, yeah, I'll be quick. Well, that's good that it's been taken up because it is so missed that people just poo poo it and think, oh, well, you know, it's all happening. But it is so important. And I've seen from different families how devastating this can be. So that's fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, councillor Julian. I think, and that's why it's important we have this training about how we hold partners to account as well. So I think that links there. councillor Carson.
Thank you, Chair. A few quick fire questions. What age range are the young people in custody?
They will be between eighteen and twenty five in terms of our, our remit.
Okay, thank you. The other one was B and B, how do we classify that? Is that unregulated and unregistered or is that registered?
No, it's not registered. We classify it as B and B. I can't remember the exact wording, Daniel, can you? We might not have it with us, but it
Because it's provision, which is for over eighteen year olds, it wouldn't need, it wouldn't, there is no registration process for that accommodation. But the the key element is whether there is, it's a self-contained unit with the ability to have a kitchenette and kitchen. If it doesn't have that, then it would be B and B. It's a hotel type accommodation. Wherever possible, we try to avoid that. If we have to, we use a short term let type holiday let type provision so that a young person has the ability to which is deemed suitable under the Ofsted framework.
Okay, thank you. For the benefit of the committee then, what does unregulated or unregistered look like?
And so if we've got provision for under eighteen year olds and they're in our care, we need to find Ofsted registered provision. There is there is a small cohort of young people which might be, have their needs met within regulated C Q C provision. So I'll just leave that to aside because it's a very small cohort of young people. In terms of registered provision for our children, we would, wherever possible, if we can't support young people in an appropriate family arrangement and kinship arrangement, look for foster care provision with either our own internal foster care provision or registered independent fostering agency. But we can't find that provision. We're looking for registered children's homes, particularly if the young person is sixteen or, sorry, under sixteen. When they're over sixteen and they're in our care or being assessed to potentially come into our care, then they have to be in either a children's home or supported accommodation which is registered with Ofsted for that purpose. If they're not in any of those and they're in, we can't find the right provision for them in a good children's home, a children's home which is registered with Ofsted and or supported accommodation, if that's appropriate for them. And we've done an assessment to ensure that their needs can be met in supported accommodation, then we sometimes have to use unregistered provision. What that looks like is not what we want for our children. So we are sometimes having to go out on into the marketplace to providers, try and find a provider who will take a young person in an emergency. Often it's agency staffing. And often it's not the best accommodation to ensure that it's robustly tracked. We then monitor every young person who's in unregistered provision on a weekly basis to ensure there's a robust plan to move those young persons from that provision wherever possible. And also, we make sure that we do Q A visits with any unregistered provision and monitor that provision to ensure it's as good as it can be given the levers we have over that provision. But it doesn't offer the stability we would want for our children. And it doesn't offer the relational stability which will allow our young people to progress in the way we would like to. So that, we want to move away from that. That's why we've got our growing futures work and our key work around improving the homes available for our children.
Can I just jump in? Because I think, you know, this is a really crucial area and I think it probably does need further investigation. further investigation and and, you know, we will look at that on the in the work programme. So I think it suits sort of links to what I said earlier on with suitable accommodation and and what does that look like? So it's probably worthy of further investigation, but I don't want to cut it short. I just realised where time is running.
And that category is only for under eighteen. So it's only for children in our care, just for clarity.
I'll let the interesting enough, I was going to come to the vice chair, but I'll go back to to Ed because while it's fresh in my mind and it links to Counselor Julian's comments and and, you know, obviously Eddie's our domestic violence champion. So sorry, I should say domestic abuse champion. Is that right? But yeah, you've got another question. Can we be really, really brief now, please?
Thank you, Chair. I've got a couple of quickfire questions and similarly, if that's all right. The first one, empower the acronym. I don't suppose you could quickly explain it to me, please?
They're a consult, they're a group, sorry, they're a consultancy which lots of local authorities use their specialist skills around ensuring we can match the needs of our children against the different homes we might be able to find for provisions. They come in to a number of different local authorities and I'm happy outside this meeting to go through some of the different work if that be helpful.
Thank you very much. The foster carers inquiries, as mentioned in item G four, what's our current conversion rate for inquiries to becoming foster carers or fully approved?
So our current conversion rate has improved against the original empower work, which is referenced in 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 the report. It is still, we think, lower than it should be if we put all the things in place to try and ensure every inquiry is tracked really robustly through to an initial home visit. And then we try and make sure the assessment process is as supportive as it can be whilst ensuring at the point where someone does become a foster carer at panel, we have good foster carers and they can meet the needs of our children. The conversion, we with any process, you have a significant dropout rate from initial inquiry through to someone going through and putting in an assessment to become a foster carer. So we are getting through roughly a hundred and fifty inquiries a year. And last year, only eleven foster carers made it through to panel. We're foreseeing this year a reasonable uplift to around about fifteen foster carers. But what we want to do is ideally get to the point where twenty or thirty plus potential foster carers are coming through to panel and being assessed as foster carers. That's partly about widening the cohort of potential carers we might be looking for and also the support we're putting in place to track that process. And that's why there's been a lot of work looking at what investment we need in that recruitment and assessment team. And again, I know time's short here. So if you wanted more information, we're happy to discuss that and I can also arrange a meeting with our head of service within fostering.
And my, just for the chief executive of us, right, you mentioned the ICB. And as we know, we've had been told that Devon ICB is making two hundred million pounds in cuts, eight percent of their budget. Have we been told any specific areas within children's services that we're going to see affected by that? Do we have any specifics yet?
Not yet, but I'm trying to make it as that it's my view that every board meeting of the ICB should be focused on children's, not just on adults. And I'm concerned that the prioritisation at this council is making for children in partnership with the district councils, that we don't have that prioritisation in the ICB because it's going through such structural change at such a pace. We made a lot of progress in this area in the last few years, but I think the level of disruption that we're seeing by that strategic change and the significant additional savings that are coming through, it presents as a risk both in this area and to our send transformation programme. But that information is not public as yet, but you're quite right to point out that the savings are extremely significant.
Thank you very much. And then very quickly, finally, I could leave it there. That's fine.
Yes, it's really important. Yeah. Michelle Thornbury is online actually from the ICB. So Michelle, I don't know if you wanted, welcome and thank you. Thank you for being there. And I didn't know if you wanted to make any comments around that last question.
Yeah, just ready to echo sort of similar concerns as Donna around our ability to maintain those good relationships that we have now, but it will certainly, we will endeavour to do that throughout the point of the process of change. We are, we haven't seen what our new structure is. It's not been made publicly available to staff yet. But we are expecting a timeline of around that showing of the new structure and the consultation process with staff. But there is an expectation that all of that change will have, including our clustering with Cornwall, will be done by for in this financial year. So by the end of March, we should be in a newer place. But we will still exist as two separate legal entities, as in Devon ICB and Cornwall ICB. But we will function as one single team until those legislative changes happen. And our legislative requirements are changing either. So we will need to continue to do what we do in the in the space of safeguarding children and all of our statutory requirements will be within that new structure. But it is a priority to make sure that we retain that stability during this point of change over the coming months and beyond.
Thank you, Michelle. And I think just for members' interest, because you might want to attend, is that that this budget will be considered by the Health and Wellbeing Board in in January. So.
The Health and Adult Care Scrutiny Committee in December. Sorry, Chair, two different boards.
Thank you, Louise. Quite right. Do apologise. The Vice Chair, Counselor Wilson.
Thank you. I just want to go back to chapter four of the report just briefly, which touches a lot on fostering. There are a lot of amber colours in there. Are they just, are they separate issues? Or is there something systemic going on there? If you can just sort of update me on a little bit on why why it's like that. Thank you.
I think in terms of our improvement journey, what you're seeing there is that in terms of homes for children, it's a a big legacy issue for us. And a lot of it's depend dependent upon sufficiency, as Daniel's mentioned. So that gap in sufficiency has built up over a long time. You're hearing today that we need, you know, a hundred homes for children every year. And we're talking about sufficiency, Daniel, of about thirty at the moment. So that's a huge gap and that's built up over time. One of the the major priorities for us is that, you know, we, the last thing we want is to see particularly children under the age of twelve going into residential care. And the legacy of us not having a strong approach to fostering and not having built up those numbers over time makes that extremely difficult. Even that expectation that Daniel's setting today to increase it, that's nowhere near the number of foster carers that we need in Devon. So we've really got to fostering as and the homes piece is the biggest legacy issue. I think what we've got to do is really challenge ourselves and with your support, challenge yourself about how quickly we can do something about that. The one good thing over the summer with the new commissioner came in and said, okay, come on, bed and breakfast. We don't want any children bed and breakfast. Let's get this sorted. And so we put a massive effort into that with colleagues and we've achieved that and we're maintaining it. And you're hearing it, it needs that innovation, as you've heard today, like with South Ham's, which is fantastic, but we need it across Devon. So I think our challenge is to see how quickly we can take those big legacy issues and be much more ambitious. So I'm glad you've pointed it out today because it's still a big piece of work that needs to happen.
Thank you. I think leaders leaders up at the end of the table there. I did wake him up. That's good. Yeah, I think, you know, it's interesting, because Southern Council Lodge also said on the on the Land and Property Committee, you know, I personally think there's some some, we need to be looking there a bit, what land we dispose enough, because land is often a barrier to be able to build. And I'm wondering whether we we ought to be looking at ways of maybe being a bit more innovative and providing our own accommodation. You know, I've heard the leader say many times, you know, I think we're fed up with people taking advantage of of people that find themselves in this position and and we need to look. And I think that is an area that we could look to. There's some land not very far from where I'm sitting, for instance, you know. Something I would be, you know, pretty sure that it's something we ought to be looking at. And again, it's that cross committee work, isn't it? When we, you know, sometimes it looks like it's a good income by offloading a bit of land, but when we come to then try and find land for this sort of scheme, I think something that we ought to look at really closely. But thank you very much. I've got really, really quickly, because I'm pretty, I was looking at page twenty five, which is what will be the impact, sorry, twenty nine, the big numbers. What will be the impact and how will we measure our impact? Can you tell me what pillar conferences are? Tell me what single feedback form is and observations of practice is? And and can you also, and my other observation is, obviously, measuring impact. We don't appear to be getting any feedback from foster carers themselves on there to understand.
Yeah, this one, this one's definitely for me. So this all forms part of our kind of closing the learning loop, really. So what we find out from our quality assurance tells us where our strengths are and where our learning needs are. So we then shape our training and development offer around those learning needs. So the pillar conferences are shaped around what we identify through our quality assurance work. So that's what a pillar conference is. So we measure our work in line with seven pillars of practice. So we've talked about management oversight and supervision. That's our seventh pillar. But there are other fundamental pillars of practice that need to be in place to be good. So pillar conferences are held every other month and they focus on one of those pillars. So the one that we've actually got next week is focusing on assessments. So it's assessment quality. And our QA work has then led us to the agenda for that conference day because we will be talking about the areas where we need to have the most impact and improve practice. So that's how that bit work works. In terms of observations of practice, that's also part of our quality assurance framework. And that's when managers observe practitioners in the field doing their jobs to make sure that we are working restoratively and that we are being the best agents of change that we can be. That feeds back in, we identify themes from those, that again feeds back into the training and the workforce development offer. In terms of the single feedback form, that's a form that is used for adults, carers. So that includes foster carers and children and young people to use to feed back to us about our service. We've actually just relaunched it, a streamlined version, because what we found was so many people wanted to ask so many different questions that it grew arms and legs. So we've just completely refined it. We have seven very clear questions that we ask. It's accessed online or through a QR code. So it's very young person friendly, not so much me friendly. And then they are able to fill out their questions and send those back to us. We've designed it so that we can complete it in real time with children and young people because it's it's absolutely worth asking for feedback at the end of our involvement. But actually, we need to have feedback during our involvement so that we can act on that feedback as we continue to work with children and families. So it's used at any point in our work with a family, just to understand how we're doing and how they're experiencing our service. Again, the themes are collated on a quarterly basis. And any areas where we identify that we really need to develop our practice feeds back into that workforce development offer.
That's great. Thank you very much. I mean, I think, I mean, my observation is that I didn't know what it was. I mean, I assume Ofsted would, and I assume, you know, almost it needs to, you know, I like to see things, what's on the tins, what's inside the tins. You know, I think it's good, fantastic that we are. And obviously, we've got our our foster champion and hopefully at the end of this meeting, then we've got our DV champion as well, so they can feed back in. So members, thanks very much for the engagement on that. Some really good questions and thank you to the officers. Yeah, again, great, great answers. I think the quite clear that we're we're doing really well and and well done to everybody in your teams. And please pass on our thanks to everybody. It's tough and appreciate everybody's doing the best they can. We were asked to note the report, members of the Families First Children's Social Care Plan for January twenty five to twenty six. Obviously, just to, I think the other thing is that we do, just to add further minutes and to make sure that we're given under a series of visits, training to ensure that effective scrutiny on this matter continues. So so we'll pick up that and and make sure so that we we get a bit more training, especially around partners and things. So thank you again. Are you staying with us or do you want to slip away?
We're staying if that's okay.
You're very welcome to. Yeah. Thank you. Richard, sorry, Counselor Jeffries, there's nothing you wanted to add?
No, I think the officers have answered all of those questions remarkably well. So, yeah, I would be, I'd just be talking for extra talk, I think.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think sometimes it's important to notice when things change in terms of member engagement. And I just think I have to note to the committee that every Tuesday, your political leads for childrens meet with the team for a few hours every single week. And Counselor Jeffries, Counselor Denise Bickley and Counselor Brazil are there every week with the team. And I think it's a really good example of that weekly oversight that's taking place in terms of what's happening in the director, whether there are issues, whether there are challenges, where we need support. And I just think I would like to say that I really welcome that level of engagement because that's the level of support that as a staff group we need.
No, thank you. I think that's a really good point. And thank you.
And yourself.
I'd say, well, no, I'm not attending every week, but I have been invited once a month, which is good. So so I think obviously, I think that that's a very new thing. So members, again, you know, I am attending once a month for that meeting. If there's anything that's pressing that that you want raising, please do come through, Louisa, myself, and obviously I can do that.
Absolutely. Would we be allowed to observe that meeting?
I genuinely, and we can only have outstanding children's services as we're all corporate parents together, it's parity of esteem. So I genuinely think that I'm sure I've looked at the cabinet leads, but an opportunity for other members to attend at some points, I think would be helpful because if we've all got that positive relational approach, then it will make us do a better job.
Thank you. It's all a learning curve, isn't it?
Great. So so are we all happy to note that and the training element of that? Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. It's good. Good job. I've got one experience wanting to keep an eye on me. Yeah, so Denise, do you want to introduce this and then we'll go over to to, no, it's not Claire, is it? We've got to change, change. Oh, it is Jack, Claire and Rachel. Sorry. Kelly.
Oh, dear. Sorry. Thank you very much, Chair. Happy to carry on. I very much welcome the opportunity for us to update the committee on our SEND transformation programme. This is one of the most significant areas of work for the council, of course, because of the financial pressures we face. But even more importantly, because we need to significantly improve the experiences and outcomes for children and young people with SEND, their families and the wider community throughout Devon. Nationally, the SEND system is under strain and Devon reflects many of those challenges. Rising demand for education, health and care plans and the need for a cultural shift towards inclusion and belonging. We've set a clear strategic direction through our inclusion and learning strategy and our SEND transformation programme. And we are committed to delivering change which aligns with the principles set out recently in the Secretary of State for Education's letter to the Education Select Committee in preparation for the forthcoming Schools White Paper due at some point in early twenty twenty six. This will be a highly anticipated and hopefully pivotal pivotal moment for SEND reform and Devon must be ready to respond quickly and confidently. Today's update will show the progress we've made while also being honest about the areas where we need to go further. This is a continuous journey and scrutiny plays a vital role in holding us to account and shaping the next steps. In this arena, while I have the chance, I would like to make a public apology for past oversights from this council to our Parent Care Forum, the PCFD, who should be here to represent parent and family voice in this process and at all stages of our improvement journey. I hope that they will be made very welcome as members of this committee going forwards. I'll now hand you over to the officers to take you through the details.
Just picking up on that that last point, Counselor Bickley, really good point. And yeah, absolutely. I mean, obviously, they can't be a member of the committee. But we'd very much welcome them to come and and make sure they add their voice to our considerations.
Yeah, that's, I think that's what they need is just to be heard and absolutely represent children right to the heart of this. That would be fantastic. I think there's been some horrendous treatment of them in the past. So I'm sure we can do a lot better. Thank you.
I think this is where, you know, we're all in different political groups here. And when I say about members of the committee going out and visits, encourage all your members of your groups to to visit and listen to parents. And and, you know, it's good feedback through you. You can feedback through the committee and we can really make sure that we strengthen that, that. it's good feedback through you. You can feedback through the committee and we can really make sure that we strengthen that, that, that parent voice, those people working in, in these areas, et cetera.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Claire Merchant-Jones. I'm the head of SEND operations here at Devon Council, County Council. I have been in post here since April and I'm really happy to work in a tag team with my colleague Rachel this morning to just talk you through some of the highlights around the SEND transformation plan. I'll just hand over to you, Rachel.
Thank you. I'm Rachel Hearn. I'm head of service for educational psychology and specialist support services. So I manage our educational psychology teams and our advisory teachers for deaf children and children with visual and physical needs. And we're really delighted to have this opportunity this morning to present our SEND transformation plan to you. And we won't go into lots of details now because we will take your questions and you've got the pack. But the plan has been reset to be aligned with the government principles and the anticipated SEND reforms around the five key areas. And those key areas are around early intervention and support, inclusion as a core value, co-production with families and experts, investment in capacity and expertise and system accountability and cultural change. We know that things haven't been where they need to be in Devon and that families have had a really difficult experience and continue to. The scale of this transformation work is enormous and immense and it's going to take time. So I'm really glad that Denise referenced that in her introduction. We know what the challenges are and we know where we're going, but it is going to take time to see those changes. But there are some green shoots starting to appear, which we'll talk to you about today. Our transformation plan has four key areas, investing in Devon schools, improving support to families, children, parents, carers and partners, reshaping our services to support vulnerable children and building inclusive learning communities. And I'll hand over to Claire to talk about those first two priorities.
Thank you, Rachel. And just to reiterate how I'm delighted we are to be here today to talk you through our transformation plan. I'm going to talk about the first priority, which is around investing in Devon schools and getting the basics right. Lots of this work, as it started, is very much really based on just getting some of our systems and processes in order internally. And one of the, I think, one of the things that's quite tricky to sit in is that the improvements we're making internally aren't necessarily going to be felt externally for a little while because we've got to get it right internally first. So just the sort of highlights from priority one. We have reformed how we make decisions on the spend of high needs funding, which is helping us make decisions quicker, getting resources to children and families in a more timely way. And the senior leadership team are focused on looking at those high needs decisions and high cost decisions for children to go into our independent specialist schools and colleges and also for children who are going into education other than at school. We are working with people to on a high needs provision framework. I can bore on about that for a really long time, but I'm not going to. And that's really about bringing some order in how we allocate funding to children against the level of their need. At the moment, we've got a bit of a, a different model which doesn't allow us to understand our children very well and understand what their level of needs are and be able to use a kind of bulk way of understanding the levels of needs of children, both across our mainstream and our special schools. So the way that will fall out really is that we'll start to be able to apply a banding system when we're assessing children for education, health and care plans. And that will help us say where, where all of our children sit. So we've got about 10,000 children education, health and care plans at the moment. We've got about a thousand, twelve hundred assessments underway today. From January onwards, we'll start a soft launch of starting to ban new children into the system. So it will really help us understand our children and what their level of needs are. And that's a really, whilst for some it's boring, for me it's very exciting. But it will really help us start to get some order and, and systematic thinking around our commissioning and sufficiency, because we'll start to be able to see children in a much more strategic way and the level of their needs. We're developing an independent specialist provision and alternative provision framework. We're using a significant amount of the high needs budget in areas of schooling and alternative provision. And this gives us a framework to use to commission that well. So we'll use only those providers and they will give us assurance around their quality. And we'll be able to use that framework to get more value for money. That will be delivered from January onwards. We are delivering a SEND sufficiency strategy and plan which will drive how our specialist provision is used in the future and absolutely focus on aligning with those inclusive communities and helping children learn where they live, which has got to be a key feature of our work going forward. We've developed and we'll deliver some new spaces that are already on board at Castle Bridge. So that's a really exciting new development, which wasn't, which was a bit delayed. But we've managed to open a small provision that will turn into a much bigger provision over the next, I think, eighteen months. So that's really exciting provision for children and young people and much needed. And we have just started an independent specialist provision recovery programme. And that's really looking at the large amount of high needs funding we're using in the independent sector and making sure that the children and their families are receiving the support that they should be within those high cost provisions and are making progress and most importantly, attending so they can really benefit from that support. I'll just move you on, move us on to priority two. So within priority two is we're thinking about improving the experience for children and young people, parents and our other partners. I'm the lead officer for this, this strand, so I'll try not to give it too much priority. But this is very much about improving the experience for families, first of all, within that education, health and care plan process. So we've got three main areas of focus. One is around timeliness of EHC assessments. So some of you may know, and certainly is in the data set later on for your, for your information. We have not been good at issuing EHC plans in a timely way. So on a national level, we should be delivering an education, health and care plan within 20 weeks. And we are, have not been doing that in the majority of cases. So in the, in the last six months, we have taken some clear actions and steps forward so that we can start improving that timeliness in a very sensitive and measured way. So it doesn't cost those people that are waiting, but also that for some new people into the system, we start to achieve our 20 week target. And this, the month just passed, at the end of October, we'd actually achieved nine percent of EHC plans being issued within 20 weeks. Now, I know that sounds like a small number, but it's a bigger number than the month before by quite a sizable amount. So we were at three percent, be at nine percent. And our plan will be to incrementally grow that over the months so that we do not disproportionately impact on children who are waiting for their EHC plan that's already over 20 weeks, but you have to start improving somewhere. So we're really excited about that piece of work and we call it a backlog, which I don't really like, but it's anyway to describe it. That is shrinking, Rachel, isn't it? Every month. And then every time you see the numbers go down, we have a little heap of joy. The next bit of equal importance is around the quality of education, health and care plans. We've introduced a quality assurance, multi-agency quality assurance approach, which does two things really. It helps us bring our local area partners together across education, health and social care, which is what an EHC plan stands for, and helps people to share that responsibility across the local area. So it doesn't feel like a solely education responsibility. So that multi-agency quality assurance approach is in place and has now operated and will be going through its fourth cycle next month. So we've got that running and it's going really well. And then we will be reporting back on that through the SEND partnership board next month. We've also established an education, health and care plan steering group, which I know sounds exciting, but it is for our partners across education, health and care to come together to own the, the, the issues, concerns and improvements around education, health and care plans across the county. And I would say there's, and I don't know whether Rachel feels the same, but there's definitely a new energy across our partners and a new enthusiasm for doing things together really well in this space so that we can collectively own our 20 week target, collectively own our annual review process. And even more importantly, our parent care forum are right embedded in that. So they are part of our improvement journey with us and they're also joining our quality assurance process, which is very exciting. The third area in this is around improving our, improving the experience for families. So, you know, Denise has touched on it. Families have not had a good experience through their journey when they're trying to get support for their children with SEND. And if we think about education, health and care plans, they're often at the end of an already really traumatic process, if you like. So we're working with families already in distress and the EHP process in some respects has caused more distress because it's not fast enough and we don't necessarily have the right provision or inclusive enough approaches within our schools because of the issues that they're trying to deal with. So that it feels like everybody's stuck in a really difficult scenario. So we are co-producing what we're calling a communication and relationship standard, which is based around the four cornerstones. And that will be signed off next week at the Four Cornerstones Committee by families. And it's a very practical opportunity to commit to what families will experience. And I'll, I'll give you an example. The, the standard says things like, when I start working with you, you will receive a phone call from me. And when we finish that phone call, you will receive an email with a bullet point list of everything we've agreed. It's very clear and it's very much what families have asked for. And our staff are signed up to it and the families have asked for it. So there's lots of different things we're agreeing to. And that, I think, really will help us hold people to account and start to really improve the experience for families. That's coupled with workforce development plan and modules around behaviour, skills and knowledge that the team need in order to deliver really brilliant experience for families. Hand over to Rachel now for priority three and four.
Thanks, Claire. So priority three is around reshaping our services to support our most vulnerable children. So this is really about bringing forward the culture change that we need in our inclusion and learning service to get things right for children and families. So it's not just what we do, it's how we do it. And it's really feeding into what Claire's touched on. It's around that culture of relational practice, an agile workforce who can adapt and be flexible and respond to needs early on. So what we've done is we've redesigned our services around three localities and those localities are aligned to health and social care. And they're going to enable us to support schools and families earlier on in that needs-led way. This is impacted on over 400 members of staff. So this, the scale of this again is huge. And whilst we now have our structures in place, which is fantastic, the work is really just beginning. Because what we need to do is to co-design with our schools and our families, how we are going to work together, what support is going to be helpful and we want to do that in partnership. We're working on developing an operating model. So that will include our ways of working, our structures, our accountabilities, our governance. And as I said earlier, that is going to take time. We take this incredibly seriously. We've got one opportunity to get this right. So at the moment, we're really holding the tension between delivering our statutory duties, keeping children safe, but also really growing and evolving and being really innovative based on those government principles around the SEND reform of inclusive practice being embedded in schools and early intervention. That's the direction of travel. I would like to draw your attention to a couple of really key things that we've done already. So I'm an educational psychologist, as I said, by professional background. And as you probably know, eighty-two percent of local authorities are experiencing recruitment and retention difficulties. We've worked really hard in Devon to support our recruitment and retention of educational psychologists. And we have a grow your own psychologist model where we bring in undergraduates, assistant EPs, trainee EPs on placements. And we're actually interviewing people today. So we are on track by September 2026 to be fully recruited and that is unheard of. And EPs want to come and work in Devon. They see that the work that we're doing is very much aligned to ethical practice, to, you know, early intervention and making a difference. So whilst there is still a huge demand that we are struggling to manage, having a fully recruited workforce is going to be really helpful. Okay. And if I move us on to priority four, this is around building our inclusive learning communities. So this is our multi-agency approach, how we're going to work with our partners, our families, our schools, our health and social care colleagues to really put inclusion at the heart of everything. For too long now, SEND and inclusion has been a bolt on, it's been an addition, it's not been weaved into everything we do. And this is why this is a really significant priority. Some of the things that we've already established are multi-agency drop-ins for schools. So if schools have got concerns around a child, they can book a drop-in and they can have support from colleagues across early health, psychology, inclusion, learning. One of the huge achievements is also around our rollout of free school meals, auto entitlement. So we are the first two-tier local authority to do this. And what that has meant is that an additional 1,079 children have been able to access free school meals because they've been auto enrolled this year. And that's also brought another 1.5 million funding into schools. Other aspects of this work have been around a digital transition platform that we're trialling in Exeter. We know that sometimes the transition from primary to secondary can be really tricky for children, particularly children with special educational needs. So we have a digital transition platform so that schools can really easily share information and plan a really enhanced transition. We're also establishing a SEND outreach model with, in partnership with Special Partnership Trust. And they are able to deliver some personalised one-to-one support for children who might have quite complex needs in mainstream schools, but also work with whole schools around their whole school inclusive practice and provision. And the other highlight to draw your attention to is that we've recently appointed a strategic advisor for inclusion, Mark Vickers from Olive Academies. And he's really going to support us and challenge us about what we're doing in inclusion and learning, but also work with our colleagues in schools to think about how they can really be supported with the inclusion agenda. And be very happy to take questions.
Thank you very much to Rachel and Claire. And I think, hopefully, you've, you've certainly answered quite a few of the questions I had written down. So that might have been good use of time. We are under a lot of pressure here because we've got Roy Linden joining us on the next item at twelve, well, at twelve. He has to be gone by one at the very latest. So I'm going to keep us to 15 minutes of questions on this. So I really urge both officers and councillors to keep the questions and the answers distinct and, and, you know, no waffling around the edges on both sides, if that's okay. I'm going to start with the, the chair, vice chair this time, and then I'll go to Christina at the back, second one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel and Claire. I'm going to go into the time allowances for decision-making a bit more. But thank you for being open and honest about the challenges and for a really robust plan to address it. But seeing it in statistics, it's quite shocking to see the differences between us and the national and regional partners. And I'm also mindful of the demonstration that parents held here a couple of weeks ago as well and the amount of distress that it causes. And I'm sure as councillors, we've, some of us have had emails and contact about that as well. I know that I have. I'm just really concerned to see that, that the delay or the time, and that includes families waiting more than 50 weeks as well, which I believe is quite a high percentage. That can be brought down as quickly as possible. But I'm curious to know why we have such a low ranking compared to other counties. When you said that nationally, everyone's struggling with the same system and with similar challenges. So why is it worse for us in Devon and how quickly can we realistically get back to something? You've made a slight improvement. How can we get back to where we should be?
So one of the things that I'm not sure was in the data pack, I think it is on the second slide in the SEND two, is that Devon has a higher number of requests for EHC assessments than other local authorities. We're in sort of the, the top, I think, top 20 in terms of the number of EHC assessments we receive. Historically, we have been accepting those assessment requests potentially a bit earlier than we might have done, meaning that there is, that we are not having the evidence that schools have been through what is called the ordinarily available provision or the graduated response. So therefore, we were receiving higher numbers of EHC assessment requests. And we were saying yes to those assessment requests more frequently than some of our neighbouring authorities. Meaning that there are a higher number of assessments coming through, meaning that there are more educational psychology reports required than in other LA's than the system can cope with. So in effect, you can't, you can't stop things coming in. And you don't, we're not talking about managing demand, but we're talking about assessments being accepted at the right time. And so therefore, we've got to make sure we are saying yes to an EHC assessment when we have evidence that the school or the that the school or the practitioners that are working with young people have been through what would be called a graduated response. We use the ordinarily available provision here. So over the last four months, we will have seen an increase in the number of education, health and care assessment requests that we are saying no to at the start of the process, where we're helping schools understand what we would expect to see for an E H C assessment request to come through. And we have moved from twenty-six per cent of saying no. So if you think that makes seventy-four per cent that were coming through, I'm not sure my maths is quite right there, but it was off the hoof, to fifty-five per cent, which is about where other local authorities are practising. So hopefully that helps. It's about the flow and just the sheer volume of demand. And I don't, Rachel, you've been in this for longer than I have.
Oh, sorry. I know time is precious. So I think one of the other challenges is in Devon before, we haven't had clarity around the support that schools can put in place from within their own resources. And what Claire was talking about, the ordinarily available inclusive provision. So that is the provision and practice that we expect schools and settings to put in before an E H C P, so from within their own resources. And that is all about a graduated response to special educational needs. So it's understanding the needs, it's putting in place some school interventions, it's seeking support from external professionals. So that is something we haven't quite got right in Devon before. And we now have a framework which we've developed with schools and with families and partners, which outlines expectations for things that schools can put in place. So there's a bit more consistency and clarity. Also, it's been really difficult for families and schools to access support early on and a real lack of confidence in the system that needs can be met without an E H C P.
Thank you, members. I'm really, really sorry, and officers. Just to be made aware that Roy Linden can only be with us till half past twelve now. To be fair to him, he's the vice chair and he stepped in to, you know, take this item. So I really, really want us to have a little bit of time on that item. I'm going to pause it and then come back to this item if members are happy with that, and officers. So I'm really sorry. So I need to adjust myself now. So yeah, welcome, Roy, and thank you. Like I said, I don't know if you can hear us, just check you can hear us. And thank you for stepping in and taking this item.
Just to confirm, just so we can do for the minutes, we're just going to pause item ten and go to item eleven and then come back to item ten at twelve thirty.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, yeah. And we don't need to move or that's just no. Okay, over to you, Roy. We'll save time.
Good afternoon. Can I just check you can hear me okay?
Yeah, loud and clear.
Fantastic. It's always difficult. Thank you very much for your time this afternoon. I hopefully, well, it depends on questions, I'm going to talk for no more than five to ten minutes and talk colleagues and members through the information that hopefully they've already had and are able to digest and then take questions that may give you some time back. So by way of introduction, my name's Roy Linden. I'm a chief superintendent with Devon and Cornwall Police. I'm one of the delegated safeguarding partners that sit on the Devon Safer Children's Partnership for two years, ending in April this year. I chaired the partnership. I'm now vice chair to Penny Smith from the Integrated Care Board, who can't be here today sadly. But because of the need, we wanted to make sure that members had opportunity to scrutinise the report that's been submitted rather than defer it to a subsequent meeting. What I'm going to come to, the need, there's a couple of documents that's been circulated, I believe, overview scrutiny report, which is just a couple of pages which summarises the more detailed version that is online. And drawing particularly at six point two of that document, just where our priorities as a safeguarding children's partnership dock into the council strategic plan, which of course emphasises prevention and early intervention. And I'm not going to read it verbatim, I don't think that would be helpful just for matters of time. There's also an exec briefing that's been completed. And if I just summarise the key areas where we've developed and being mindful, the safeguarding annual report takes us until April of this year. It's done on a financial year basis. So albeit there have been significant further improvements since April, I won't specifically be talking to those today. So the areas for improvement, sorry, the areas of success and key strengths. So working together to safeguard children twenty twenty-three was implemented during the reporting year up until April. We were ahead of a number of other areas that sit outside the South West region and implementing that, that was done by December twenty twenty-four. That included clearer governance, accountability, updating safeguarding arrangements. And importantly for members, involved integrating a new role for what's called lead safeguarding partners. So until Working Together twenty-three, the highest level at which the partnership sat will be somebody like me from the police, somebody like Penny Smith, who's the lead nurse for the Integrated Care Board and your director of children's services. The lead safeguarding partnership role now takes it a step above that, which will have Donna Manson sitting as chief exec alongside James Vaughan as the chief constable and Steve Moore as the director for the Integrated Care Board. What we've also done in this reporting period in integrated education, which is following on, actually, from the conversation it appears you've just been having, particularly in relation to special educational needs. And whilst in government policy, it is not requiring education to sit as a fourth strategic partner, the way the vast majority of safeguarding children's partnerships, and particularly ours in Devon, see it is that education are very much that fourth partner and therefore their involvement at both the strategic level. So the lead safeguarding partnership level and our level has been a real bonus from a Devon perspective. And it allows that much richer conversation in terms of implementing the statutory requirements. We've also, we've had a transition of independent scrutineers. That transitions between this reporting period, which you've seen in the documents, and the activity since April. We've now got an enhanced independent scrutiny role following a successful recruitment process, replacing what was somebody acting on an interim basis, which is really important. Their role is to hold us to account as a partnership, rather than what members may be used to. Certainly those who remember some of the previous arrangements, which was doing some more detailed independent scrutiny of the application of the partnership directions. It's actually holding us to account as a partnership and scrutinising our adherence. It just adds that extra role of independent governance into it. So I would suggest we've got an improved strategic focus as a result of this. And certainly a focus on our four key priorities, stronger prioritisation of early help, child exploitation and missing, pre-birth and infancy and contextual safeguarding, which is that risk of children outside of the interfamilial or home environment. Whilst there are some key things that we have improved on, particularly in relation to data capacity, there are still some significant areas of progress that are required. Members, I am sure, are much more acquainted with the Improvement Partnership Board, which is the way partners come together to assist Devon Children's Services to improve following the Ofsted inspections, the last two inspections through the ILAX system. The role of the partnership as that statutory multi-agency footprint has been absolutely critical. And we have spent some time aligning our priorities and the activity required in order to support Devon Children's Services through the Improvement Partnership Board. So effectively, you have two statutory boards that exist with very similar objectives, and that's taken some time to coordinate. In terms of the what next, the gaps in provision and partnership arrangements, which are very much in this year's business plan. So we'll come to members and colleagues next year in the reporting framework is embedding learning. I am sure most of us are acquainted sadly with repeated cases nationally, where one of the first lessons that always comes out is effective communication between agencies at both practitioner and senior level. The ability of agencies to learn from previous serious incidents and safeguarding practice reviews, that is very similar and a very clear lesson that's identified within our partnership. We commissioned a review during this reporting period conducted by our previous independent scrutineer to look back at serious cases over the last three years and report back into the partnership where we have or haven't effectively learned from those areas. And there are some significant gaps. That is very much a priority for this reporting year. One of the further areas for improvement is the way we use data. Whilst data can be quite a dry subject, understanding where there are gaps in provision. Again, following the conversation, you have just paused, particularly in relation to send and early help. We are still needing to go that step further. So now we have got a dashboard, which is really helpful. We are using data at all levels in the partnership, right from the very operational level all the way up to the lead safeguarding partnership level. And some investment in this reporting year to secure a data analyst, which was brought in right to the end of this reporting year, but has actually now already started to bear fruit post-April. So whilst the report shows that as a significant area for improvement, one of the things I can hopefully offer some verbal assurance today is that in the next year's reporting period, you will see the fruits of that labour. One of the other things that you will, I've no doubt members will have their attention drawn to is workforce development and financial sustainability. So one of the things we are still working on this year is the expectation of which practitioners need to access the partnership training offer. So that will look different as if you are a police officer working within Devon and Cornwall compared to a social worker. And there is an inconsistency across the partnership. So we work across four local authority areas within Devon and Cornwall Police as to how we access partnership training in addition to, or sometimes complementing, what is a statute requirement. That's the same if you're working in the health service as well. And finally, financial sustainability. So this is where the application of working together to safeguard children has both a Devon footprint and a regional footprint. So one of the voluntary parts of governance we have added, whilst you have a lead safeguarding partnership role within Devon, which Donna Manson sits on, we have also created a pan-Devon Lead Safeguarding Forum, which sits with Devon, Plymouth and Torbay working together. And so whilst most of the statutory services feeding finances into partnership roles have paused for this financial year, there is an open action in that forum to define where we share funding across those partnership boundaries for things, example of data analysis, because most of the data we analyse is very similar across those three partnerships and it doesn't degrade or denigrate some of the impact on individual geographical areas. Chair, that is probably all I wanted to draw colleagues' attention to as a scene setting and just picking up what I and the partnership would see as some of the key issues. There are obviously a lot more detail contained within the report, and I'm really happy to take any questions or expand on areas I've covered.
Thank you very much, Roy. Yeah, I mean, I'm going to kick off myself because I can't see any immediate hands. I mean, I'm just frustrated, I guess is the word. I mean, and this is not aimed at you or Donna, but I sat on children's scrutiny twelve years ago. And then we were talking about the fact that we had problems with information sharing and everything else. And it staggers me that children are potentially at real risk because partners aren't willing to share with each other. And you sometimes ought to say, well, what is more important? You know, the risk to the child or the risk to the, you know, somebody. You know, I think if we're doing best endeavours to protect the child, I'm sure that nobody's going to come down too hard on certain partner that shared information. But I don't get it. I don't understand it. I'm looking at the chief exec. She is in the room. But surely, you know, whether it's a national legislation law, the law needs changing. So that if a partner knows something that's going to protect a child, they're going to share with all those people that have got the ability to protect the child. I might be being too simplistic, but I don't know who's going to answer that. All sorts of screens are going up, so over to you.
If I start, and I'm very happy because there are other safeguarding representatives who are sat in the room, Donna, I think, Michelle Thornbury. We're not seeing colleagues failing to share information at an operational level or above that. The main issue which are serious, so it is a national issue, the main issue is effective communication, sharing of risks. So the information sharing is not the barrier. The effective bringing together of understanding the collective risk. So where different agencies have different pieces of information, where that sits into our statutory processes and where that's effectively discussed, that could reasonably be a challenge back to us. What we are seeing as a significant issue where we have a serious incident and we've picked up the learning, is that learning really landing with practitioners across the systems, that's across statutory agencies. That is something we are not effective on at the moment, and that is a clear focus for the partnership.
Sorry, Emily, was it? Emily, did you want to come in? Michelle, sorry.
No, I think Roy's just answered the question and apologies. I had a short power cut, so I missed the last couple of minutes of Roy's presentation there. But I'm happy to support with any other questions.
Donna.
Yeah, I think what's important to say is some of the changes we've made at the front door. And I just want to thank Roy for the journey he's been on with us over the last few years because he has been a consistent, stable police leadership input on all things partnership. And, you know, it has been challenging at times, but actually we've worked through that. And some of the changes that we have made at front door level have been critical. So that bit about, and I'll ask Becky to explain because it's a really good example, where we are much better connected. But often, you know, our staff are out there responding to all sorts of different things. And it's always a journey of improvement. There's always learning to take place. But I'll give an example, ask Becky to give an example from front door because that's where we really have changed. And so having different staff in there with different roles working together. And I think domestic abuse and violence is an example of a change. But there have been some changes Becky to outline, I think, shows that the work we're trying to do better.
Thanks, Donna. Yeah, so the front door is a good example of how we've reviewed systems and processes as a partnership to improve our information sharing and therefore our response to children and their families. So one of the things that we have in place is a front door strategic board that is chaired by our police colleagues and is well represented by the partnership. So we use that forum to really work together to think about how we can continue to make improvements. So one of the key achievements, which has been challenging for us all over the last six to twelve months, is moving to one route in to the front door. So we had a number of different referral pathways into our front door, which actually made it really difficult for our staff in the front door to have oversight of all of those different routes in and all of that information. We now just have one route in to the front door. I think probably two or three years ago, we had probably fifteen, twenty routes in. Well, you can imagine overseeing that was particularly difficult with the numbers of children that get referred into our services at any one time. We now have one referral route in into a portal that's overseen by managers and triaged at the front door. And then we make that decision at that point about what information we might need from partners so that we can share that in a more timely and effective way. So that's just one example of some of the work that we've done together. The other thing that we've done is introduce domestic abuse workers into our front door so that that can really support that decision-making around those particular concerns and those issues and make sure that we've been effective around managing that risk. And just in addition to that, we've got some strategic work that we're engaged in as a partnership that's been supported by Hertfordshire as our sector-led improvement partners around really how we really, how we're clear about our vision for the front door going forwards. And we have that shared understanding across all of our services about what we're trying to achieve, which is ultimately that we work together to keep children within their families and within their communities wherever possible. But where the risks are too great and we need to do something differently, that that's a shared risk and a shared response that we're all in agreement with in terms of the action that needs to be taken. I don't know if Michelle wanted to add to any of that, but it feels like we're, you know, from a relational perspective, we're making some really good progress. And those workshops that work with Hertfordshire is throughout the system. So they're delivering work alongside us with our practitioners across all of the agencies that sit in the front door. So police, health and education colleagues.
Chair, could I just take some of these, one of the other key points, if that's okay? It's difficult to read colleagues in the room if that's inappropriate. But I've tried not to stray in my update into this year's business, so that activity post-April. But there's been some really important government or national changes under the Families First partnership, which has been discussed with some members in the Improvement Partnership Board, which will be a fundamental vehicle for delivering some of this change, one of which will be the concept of multi-agency child protection teams. So whilst our agencies, as Becky's articulated, have worked closely together, there's been some significant improvement in this year. The development in this reporting year we're currently in, in relation to the Families First partnership, will be a really significant driver for that co-design of multi-agency teams to deliver some of these, against some of these challenges.
Thank you. I'm conscious of time. So I think where I was picking my comments up were from page ninety-four. So as Louise has just whispered into my ear, yeah, hopefully, we're going to see a very different page ninety-four next year. And, yeah, so I accept that and thank you for, go on, Becky.
I guess just to add, and Michelle and Roy may not have heard this in Vicky's commentary earlier, but also that, you know, all of our conferences that we're delivering do address, are set up to address. but also that, you know, all of our conferences that we're delivering do address our setup to address some of these issues that we know that we've still got work to do around. So there is that learning and development programme that's set up both in-house and across the partnership to, to deal specifically with some of these practice issues.
I think, I mean, 12 months is a long time, isn't it? And I, you know, I think personally, I, I think so maybe especially considering how we've been constrained to time this morning, maybe want to overlook at this in six months, three months, six months, if that's okay. Councillor Julian, Councillor Rich, Councillor Tillsley then, Councillor.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Right, I mean, it, it's fantastic that the police are on board. I think that, I think that's a very, very good thing. But what, I think what you said, Chair, that 12 years ago, it was very broken, the agencies. I, I, I did have some meetings in those days where some of the agencies never communicated to other agencies because they were scared of saying something where they thought they might get the sack or be reprimanded. And, and, and that is not the way forward because behind the scenes or during the scenes, you need to talk to one another to find out what we've missed and so we can move forward. And I found that a lot of agencies didn't want to talk to other agencies and that's where we fell down. And I think now that the police are on board, very much so. And I think that as long as we keep the communication open, I think we can move this really fastly forward. And I think we're going to be, I think the children will benefit and we will benefit as a whole. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Tillsley then, Councillor Richards.
Thank you very much. My question was answered in the previous question. Thank you. Thank you very much. Just picking up on page 93 about voice of the child. In this report, it recognises that it's still, you know, it's still not good enough. I just wonder if, you know, when we think about safeguarding risks for children, obviously, you know, actually hearing from the children themselves, that is the best way we're going to properly understand these risks. So what innovative thinking can we do with, you know, engaging with children more? I'm thinking, you know, can we involve sick form or college students going into schools and, you know, having a sort of mentoring capacity, but in that way feeding back those, you know, experiences of children. So as a council, we can more effectively understand these risks and deal with them.
Thank you, Chair. Do you want me to start with that answer?
I'm sorry, I've got an officer in the room keen, so I'm going to go there first and then yourself. Thank you, Roy.
Roy, it's Vicky. So as, as Roy will be aware, I chair the business group for the partnership and I'm responsible for the leadership of the business team in the safeguarding partnership. At the last exec meeting, I was really quite clear that my ambition is to actually build a, almost a shadow safeguarding board, but of young people who can hold us to account in terms of all of the safeguarding partners. And they can review and they can scrutinise our work, but also feed into what we're doing. So we're constantly listening to the views of children and young people. And that's not just children and young people who have been open to children's social care, for example, but it's drawing on youth councils. So we have our participation service who oversee the youth council work and that's through education and through schools. We have our own stand-up speak up group, which is the voice of our care experienced children and young people. So it's drawing from all different groups of young people across Devon, but to form a kind of youth council or a youth safeguarding board, which will then be able to shadow our own. Now, that is quite ambitious and that is going to take a little bit of time to, to set up. As you can imagine, there's a lot of tape around that. But actually, that's where we want to get to. For now, what we've done is we've introduced into every single agenda of every single subgroup, the voice of the child. So we make sure that we are holding that in mind and looking at whatever we're developing through the lens of a child. But additionally to that, we now have our participation team manager attending the business group. So she is regularly feeding back into us what children and young people are saying across Devon and what their priorities are. We've also identified their priorities through a recent report. And we now have their priorities in our chat for every single group that we have. So we can continuously apply what we're doing to make sure that it matches what our young people are asking us to do.
That's fantastic. Becky, do apologize.
Just really quickly, just to add to what Vicky's already said, but in, in relation to children who are at risk of exploitation. So through the subgroup that reports into the Devon Safeguarding Children Partnership, we have recently developed a strategy in terms of our response to exploitation. It is still in draft, but that is informed by the voices of children and young people. So they were very much part of that needs assessment and have been part of the development of that strategy. So I think it is work that is strengthening all of the time. And Roy's mentioned Families First reforms and we talked about them a little bit earlier as well. But we will also have lived experience groups as part of our work to implement those reforms. Thank you.
Councillor Richards, I think that answers your question. There's no, I don't need to get, I want to go to the vice chair because I don't know if she's got a question.
If there's time, I think we've got a few minutes. We know that children's services are on an improvement journey and I just wondered how the partnership works with that improvement journey, how it supports that journey. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I, if I start the response to that.
Roy, I'm sure on that one, I think.
Yeah, if I can start the response. So one of the things we did, probably was about two, two and a half years ago now, was formally linking with the Improvement Partnership Boards. That's why I very quickly described these two statutory boards that seek to address these overlapping issues. So the Improvement Partnership Board, which is the statutory support to Devon Children's Services. I attended as the chair, Penny does now as the chair and I attend as the lead police. So that representation across both boards is really critical. What we also did, and it's, it sounds quite dry as a point of governance, but it's really important in setting that strategic direction, is ensure that the priorities of the Improvement Partnership Board to support children's services were mirrored and reflected in the partnership improvement priorities as well. And then that then seeps down into all of the different subgroups. So we were really tracking across and that is putting on a formal footprint, you know, where Devon and Cornwall Police are practically supporting that improvement journey.
And Michelle, do you?
Yeah, so within health, what we did when we had the, the ILAX inspection recommendations, we did a read across to look at which of those were very, what had an impact for health and health provision and health services. And looked and developed our own improvement that will help in support the local authorities' improvement journey, recognising that some of the things, they are not necessarily single agency in the way they can be successfully achieved. So do require us as a partner to support local authority colleagues in that improvement journey. And so, and I know Vicky will talk about the, the partnership business group, which holds that improvement plan in that agenda. And then that's supported then by all those partners around the table to look at that improvement and contribute to it. So I think I'm confident to say that we all contribute to, to those improvement plans.
Anybody want to add anything from the officer side here? And not, nobody's desperate. Members, obviously, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Michelle, for that contribution and Roy. Obviously, we, we have run out of Roy's time and he does need to go. Obviously, the recommendations are there in your papers. I would like to move that actually we, we, as per paper, but take out endorse, just given the amount of time we've had to properly, just, just to note not to endorse at this stage. Because I think it would be useful to bring this back. And that's no criticism of the report. I'm just conscious that A, we get these papers quite late. It's a clumpy report. I think that's partly due to processes, but, and the postal service at the moment. So it is quite, I know members, some members didn't receive the report until a day or two ago. So I'm quite happy to note the report as set out in A, B and C. And I would like to say, add a recommendation D, that, that we have a stand and over group, stroke masterclass, whichever is the most appropriate, so that we can actually sort of have that opportunity to really understand how this, this, the safeguarding partnership works and give us further opportunity to ask some questions. And then, as I say, perhaps bring it back again in, in six months' time to, to look at it. But thank you ever so much for all the work that's going on. It's quite clear there has been an awful lot of good work that's happening and probably nothing more important is there. So, so keeping children safe is, and I know that there's a commitment on all sides and it's good that we are working together. But are members happy with that approach? If so, you've got a move for that, Councillor Tillsley, second Councillor Julian, thank you. And all those in favour? Excellent. Thank you all. Members, I, we're obviously going to go back to, but I'm conscious that we have been going for a couple of, couple of hours. Whether we have a comfort break. So thank you again, Michelle and, and Roy. So yeah, if you'd like a quick comfort break, probably a good opportunity and then, then we'll go back to, what item was it? Ben, thank you. Can we start taking our seats, please? Members, can we take our seats, please? That's a danger when you give somebody a comfort break with, it becomes a lunch break. So once again, I'm really sorry about that, members and officers really, because it did, it has interrupted the flow. The, the chair of, the vice chair of the partnership had indicated he'd be available to us from 12 till 1. And then Louise got a email saying he had to go at half past 12. So we will pick that up offline and, and make sure that doesn't happen again. So, so apologies again. Back to item, lost my, it was, it was item 10. And my next person on the list for a question was, was Christina. Are you happy, Christina? Appreciate this. It's probably slightly tricky on context, but.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you very much for your input and the headline progress and welcome the new specialist places. That's good. I just wondered, I've got just a few questions.
Christina, sorry. Can you just bring your microphone close?
Big place. Yeah. And I just got a few questions, if that's all right. How, how are you going to monitor the education of the children in those specialist places so that you know that it's having an impact for them to be there? And the inclusion headlines.
Christina, sorry, just to make sure, because, yeah, thank you.
Inclusion headlines. I can't see anything about the number of children in elective home education with EHCPs. And I'd be interested to know what that number is and how you're going to bring those children back into education. I noticed in one of your priorities, it says when to, to have fewer children in elective home education when it's not the right choice for them, and particularly with the EHCPs. So how are you going to be working with those families to bring them back in, into education? The permanent exclusion rate and obviously the overall suspension rate is, both those rates are quite high. So, so what progress are you going to make and when do you hope to get those numbers down? And just one last question, in your priority four, it says building inclusive learning communities. How are you interacting with academy trusts? There are a lot of academy trusts and they will have their own inclusion policies. And so how, how are you interacting with them? I noticed that Education Southwest is on.
From. Thank you.
So I don't think Rachel and I can give you the specifics around where the hubs are, but we will absolutely share that with you outside of the meeting, if that's okay. We'll find out from our expert on where they're being built unless Denise knows. All I can add to that is that it's in partnership with the academy there, Tedrag Trust, and plans are being made.
Will they come back? But is it a new build or is it going to?
It won't be part, it won't be a new build. It will be part of the inclusion and learning strategy to make send at the heart of their trust. So starting it in one of their schools. Yes, so there are send hubs within schools and it's in partnership with Education Southwest. So there's a model where schools within that trust are able to access some specialist support and expertise for children with special educational needs. And the idea is to obviously look at the impact of that and to grow that model in other parts of Devon.
Could, could I have a conversation after this meeting or next week? Because there is an area, I think, which should be able to suit these needs.
Certainly. And in answer to your question around the staffing, these are not additional staff. They are the current workforce. What we had historically was teams that worked around a specific function. Whereas now we have redesigned their roles so that each school will have a link inclusion partner who will have oversight for attendance, exclusions, elective home education, and can be that point of contact for every school in Devon and is able to signpost and support around early intervention. So we have redesigned the way we are using our staff, not employed additional.
councillor Tillsley.
Thank you very much, Chair. With regards to your point about elective home education, I believe there are changes coming in to be able to look at provision better. So we are definitely seeing improvement. Yes, there are small numbers of cases, but very heartbreaking cases about people using the system. Not to the benefit of young people, but anyway, not my question. The priority one, investing in Devon schools looks excellent. I just wanted to ask if there's been any, has there been any work with teaching and support staff unions about how to retain teachers and retain that wealth of experience? Because schools are given more and more than needs to be done on the same sort of budget. Teachers are already, well, they're leaving the profession in droves. Unions have got lots of great ideas and I've got one here, the Education Endowment Foundation, I'm sure you know, suggests reducing class sizes is the way to manage inclusion. And it massively shows that increasing, sorry, decreasing class sizes increases inclusion rates. How much work's been done with our unions, please?
Thank you. We haven't directly worked with the teaching unions about teachers' roles in schools, but we are very aware of the challenges in schools right now in terms of staff wellbeing, in terms of the curriculum. And I think one of the things that we are thinking about in terms of our inclusion and learning strategy is how we can support teachers' wellbeing. Because we need to be able to support staff so that they can support the children. They are, they are the experts in teaching. So things such as providing supervision, such as what Vicky talked about earlier in terms of supporting our social workers, actually supporting our designated teachers for children in care, our designated safeguarding leads, so that they can have some professional supervision to support them with the complexities of their role. And another piece of work we're also doing is tapping into national programmes around special educational needs, such as training from NACEN, so that we can signpost and support schools to evidence-based training that's already out there.
Happy. Councillor Julian then, was it specifically linked to the follow-on from there? Are you happy, Robin, if we let Christina come back?
Yes, following on, you know, looking at teachers' wellbeing and linked to the inclusion. There are, as we know, a national problem with the reduction of pupil numbers. And, and therefore, in a lot of our rural schools, the key stage one are being educated in one class, key stage two in another class, thinking about the wellbeing of teachers, also thinking about inclusion and how difficult that is to educate with the HCPs and SEN needs within that context. That's going to be quite challenging and how, how are you addressing that?
I think one of the things that we're doing through our ordinarily available inclusive provision framework is sharing good practice. So we have some schools in Devon that are excellent at doing that. We've been out to schools, we've interviewed them, we're creating videos and case studies. And also as part of our locality work, we want to set up networks and hubs between schools to support that sector-led improvement, because we have got some real strengths and expertise in our Devon schools that can be shared.
Councillor Julian.
Yes, thank you, Chair. About home education, I mean, you know, I mean, some people, you know, do have children home educating quite successful, but where we are in North Devon, I mean, we've got a vulnerable area. And we have the parents that hardly ever went to school in, in their day. And it's followed on by their children that we've got some schools where they're trying to go out and see the children that don't turn up for school. And then try and lure them back into school and they sort of come back once and then they're back falling into this, this merry-go-round and then they find them on the streets. And I, I feel that, you know, what are we doing about trying to get these most vulnerable children that are not being educated at home, but, you know, the parents don't really bother because they never bothered. And we're going to go around this horrible vicious circle of not getting these children in. But what can we do to lure them back into the school? Which some of these schools are doing their utmost, but they don't seem to have any backing from the county to enforce what they're doing or encourage what they're doing, you know, depending on how you word these things, to try and get them back in. Because it is quite something in these poor areas to get these children back. Could you tell me about that?
Can I, can I jump in? Because I'm not sure the officers are aware, but, but we have, you're absolutely right, councillor Julian. And that's why we've got this masterclass coming up. Because I think, you know, we really do need to dive deep into the whole home education arena, if you like. So we have got the masterclass coming up, but obviously I don't know if either of you can add something to councillor Julian's question.
I think part of it is coming back to our statutory duty. So as a local authority, we do have a duty to ensure that any families that are electively home educating are providing a suitable education. So we have got officers that visit and can make that judgment. And if it is deemed not to be suitable, and also if there are any vulnerabilities around that child in terms of child protection or child in need status, then we're really clear that that is not suitable and we need children to be in school. So we, we have got a responsibility and we are able to support those children back into school. I think, again, it is about that graduated response and it's about really understanding what is going on for that family, what is the barrier to education? Often there are far broader things in terms of housing, you know, challenges with finances, mental health concerns. So it's looking at the whole family collectively and thinking what can we do? What services can we put in place to support?
Thank you for that. There is a big gap here because I went, I went to some schools and asked these very important questions and they said they're doing their utmost. But then they do their utmost and then there's a gap where you've just said, but that gap hasn't been filled, that void hasn't been filled. And I think we do need to fill that void as soon as possible because we'll end up going round a merry-go-round, aren't we, really, basically? What do you think?
I mean, personally, I, I think you're making a really good point. And I think there is, this is something that we probably need to look at in that masterclass.
Yeah.
I think it will give us more time and more engagement. Have we got a date for that yet?
At the start of the meeting, Chair, when I went through the work programme, it was scheduled for the 25th of November, but we were asked to postpone that. We'll pick that up with you after the committee today. I think the officers wanted to ensure that we had all the right partners at that masterclass to ensure it was as effective as possible and make the best use of the time. But we'll, we'll go back through the minutes and the recording. There's obviously some key questions that members are raising today around elective home education. The officers are doing a great job in answering some of those, but we'll make sure that we pull a list together so that we can share that in preparation for the masterclass as well to ensure that we go into that in more detail, if that's helpful, Chair.
It is. And councillor Julian, are you happy with that? Because you'll pick up these, these questions.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, I think there'll be this, sooner the better, I think.
And at the same time, I don't want to rush into it before we've, you know, it's a balance in that, isn't it? I think hopefully, have we got a commitment to January?
We'll pick it up after this meeting.
Okay.
Only very quickly, I guess, just to add to what, what Rachel was saying, you know, it, it, this does require a multi-agency response. It requires a partnership response to support those children back into schools. Because often it is the needs of, of the parents as well as the needs of our children. So it's how we address that collectively. And I guess one of the things that we've, we've done is the, is the, the growth of our targeted early help provision so that we do have more capacity to go in and support those children and families within their homes and make those links with the schools and work with colleagues in inclusion and learning. So it's, yeah, it's quite a big, sort of, there's, there's quite a big picture to it. But yeah, absolutely right, we've still got a lot more work, a lot more work to do. But we need everybody round, round that table to support with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Councillor Richardson, I think, yeah. Oh, sorry.
That's all right. I just wanted to add a little bit to that. There's two things. I know that the Children's Wellbeing Bill that's coming through is obviously identifying a, a need throughout the whole country with this problem where people go off role without suitable education being set up in the background. And I think that, that should close that gap. But the other thing, more locally, is that with the, with the inclusion and the learning strategy, trying to get local hubs where all the schools in that area still have responsibility for the children in that area, whether they're on role or not. And so that should see that, that being slightly closed as well, from what I can imagine. That's, that's how we want it to be working. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yes, I do see what you're saying. But we do, it, it is, we do need to get that connection. And I think that masterclass would perhaps drill down onto, onto this. But we do need to get them together because it's the vulnerable kids, children that, that desperately need to, you know, because in future, when they go to get a job, and I mean, they're so behind in their education and, and it's a merry-go-round. And we do want to try and get everybody, you know, feeling that they're wanted and needed, really, basically.
Absolutely. I, I, I think such a massive problem for the children at the moment because they've had austerity, they've had children centres shutting, they've got no youth centres, you know, there, there's just a lack of ambition and hope. But I think getting in early help, helping families is the key to that and changing those patterns of behaviour. So I think we're on the right track.
You've forced me to plant a question from this report, councillor Piggly. I think myself and councillor Wilson were at a meeting last night and, you know, there's an excellent lady that presented, her concern was that people weren't engaging, or we weren't engaging with nursery provision and, and, you know, allowing early help to happen from there. But I think we're going to pick that up outside that meeting. But, you know, I think there's some excellent work going on and I think we are a new council, a new administration, we're all part of it. And I think, you know, it's good that these questions are being asked and actions are happening. So over to councillor Richardson. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Couple of points, if I may, is that all right? Thank you. Thank you very much. The first thing, just on page 51, so note that there's quite a consistent rise in, in EHCPs being issued. Can we, I, I know we can't really forecast, you know, the next few years very well, for, you know, obvious reasons, but can we expect that consistent increase to rise as the 20-week issue performance gets better? Or are there any other factors at play on that one? Secondly, thank you to councillor Wilson, right at the start, asking about the 20 weeks performance. I was going to ask something similar, but I just wanted to clarify on the, our data, basically. So we're ranked 150th out of 152 authorities. But City of London and Dorset, I believe, if, if I'm reading this correctly, have had no EHCPs being issued. And therefore that's why they're at the bottom. Is there any clarification that could be made on that? Because if that is true, then really we are, I suppose, the lowest out of the ones that are issuing EHCPs. And finally, I think this report, clearly it's screenshots of the PowerPoint. And I'd really like to access some of these Power BI reports. So would it be possible if this could be sent to members? So we can have a look at these Power BI reports as the links aren't working on the report. But thank you very much.
Councillor Richardson, I'll take them in order and then if I forget one, they'll have to remind me. The first one was about the issuing data. So I think your question is about will the number of EHE plans we're issuing overall increase as our 20-week performance improves? And this is such a strange dataset that you could issue a small amount of education, health and care plans every month and you could ignore all the ones that go over 20 weeks, which obviously is morally not the right thing to do and isn't something you would do. But because the measure's only on 20 weeks, you sort of have to add up the ones that aren't meeting 20 weeks and the ones that are making 20 weeks to do your overall issuing. So we would expect that the number of EHE plans that are issued overall to improve and to increase because we are working down that backlog. And the, the amount of staff available to do that work isn't bigger. We're just trying to deploy it more effectively and efficiently. So there's, there's probably a limit to the number of EHE plans you can issue overall. That coupled with trying to resolve our sufficiency issue and placement issue. So you can run your EHE assessment, but if you can't find the right place for a child to be educated, you sort of create a bit of a bulge at the end because you, you can't just tell everybody they need to go to their mainstream school. So does that help around the issuing bit?
Yeah, thank you. It's good to hear that because I think, you know, that just needs to be clarified because what we don't want to, you know, what we don't want happening is us being alarmed that we might suddenly see a massive rise in EHCPs and people jumping to conclusions when actually it might be down to, you know, our performance in reaching those 20-week targets.
And there won't be more, I don't think. My message is that there will be more delivered in a timely way, but not that many more because we still want to manage that backlog of children who've, who've been waiting the longest. The 20 weeks, just to reassure you, around the City of London and Dorset, that's the number of plans they issued in 20 weeks. So they issued zero plans in a year within the statutory timescale. And so they're sat joint bottom because they didn't issue any within 20 weeks. And I guess it's worth saying at this point, this data, Rachel's just written down, which is about to say old data. So this dataset is about last year. So it's the whole of 2024. You report in the January of the year before. So we will have a new dataset that we send in, in January 2026, which talks about the whole of 2025. That then isn't published until June of 2026. And by that point, that data is so old that you are looking back eight, in 18 months before. So it's unlikely that our 20-week performance will look massively improved from where we are today because it's talking about 10 months, 11 months that have already passed.
Can I just jump in? I mean, I, I get that, but, you know, the, I, obviously we're trying to scrutinise performance here and now. How do we get more up-to-date data so that we are looking at?
Yeah.
You know, you know, it's not.
And I think, I mean, I'm talking on behalf of everybody, but I think Denise, we can work on how people get up-to-date data. I'm, I'm more than happy to share. It will be in the SEND board reports and those, in the SEND partnership board reports that maybe Denise, there would be some way of sharing that with the, with the committee. So we, in order for our SEND operations colleagues to issue plans on time, they need to have educational psychology advice because that is a statutory part of the assessment. So we have data about our improved educational psychology advice. So in August, we completed 17% on time and there's been incremental gains every month. For October, we had 27% of advices on time. So that will then have a knock-on impact on the number of plans that we're able to issue on time. So we can show you those incremental gains, if that's helpful.
That is helpful, councillor Richardson.
Yeah, that, that's great. Just a final point was whether we could have the, the PowerPoint sent to us so we could access the Power BI.
And do, and, I mean, do, I probably do. So I'm assuming, I probably, it's a little bit of training around that, that how we use that BI platform. Appreciate you, you won't, I will.
Give you a hand if you want.
We have, I've run out of hands. Brilliant way to finish that item, giving the chair a kicking. But yeah, no, it's, it's brilliant. Thank you very much. Thank you, officers, and, and thank you for all you're doing. Again, very much like we said with the, with, with, with the social care team, tremendous pressure and we do realise how hard the, how hard officers are working and, and it's, it's turning around the Titanic, isn't it? You know, did catch you very briefly. I obviously have a day job as well that end up emailing in quite regularly. So, you know, it is fantastic, what, what, what the work that is going on. And we really, you know, the, the efforts that everybody's making to turn this around and improve it is, is, you know, scrutiny will play a part in that. Hopefully then we, we can all be really proud in three or four years' time where we're not 150th, but also not only we're turning around the EHCPs, we're seeing better outcomes for young people. That's the most important thing. So thank you and we look forward to, to you coming back. God, that's a big arrow, isn't it? So our recommendation, I wouldn't survive without Louise, I don't think, or Sarah. So, so thank you both. So our recommendation is to note the progress made through the Devon SEND Transformation Programme and endorse the continued focus on inclusion and early intervention in line with the anticipated schools' white paper. Members, you all happy with that? So that, that's noted and. Oh, we need a proposal in a second for that one. So councillor Richardson, thank you and, and myself, I'm quite happy to, oh, councillor Julian. No, I don't like to propose a second myself, really. All in favour? Thank you. Okay, I think we now go to item 12, which is to note, yeah, which, which was the Children's Standing Committee, Children's Scrutiny Committee Standing Overview Group, which we all did. So obviously we've got that coming back. Louise, I guess this is you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, the committee held a standing overview group on the 20th of October and I'm just flicking the agenda over. Give me bits of paper, sorry, Chair.
There's not, I think, dodged around.
No. So yeah, thank you to the officers for that standing overview group. This was a meeting focused on a proposed recommissioning framework for accommodation and support for 16-plus looked-after and care-experienced young people and 16, 17-year-old youth homelessness, also known as My Future, My Way. The Standing Overview Group met on the 20th of October, as I said, and received a presentation. The report to the committee is just a short update to support transparency and scrutiny activities outside of the committee meeting. And this was circulated to members who attended the committee to ensure accuracy in the reporting of the paper and also to the officers to ensure accuracy in the reporting of the information that they provided. The Standing Overview Group had a series of recommendations coming out of it, which are outlined in A to D in this report. So I pass over to you, Chair, around those recommendations. And if there's anything that members wanted to, to raise, obviously, Daniel Moncrief was one of the officers at the Standing Overview Group. And a massive thank you to your, you and your team for all the work that went into that. I didn't think there was anything you wanted to add, Daniel, but the report kind of speaks for itself, Chair.
Daniel, did you want any adding? I mean, I thought.
No, happy to answer any questions outside of this talk about the process as we recommission our 16-plus provision. It links with the housing questions we had at the beginning of the meeting.
And I think just to also add, Chair, that there's a decision expected by Cabinet in December on this. So this was sort of pre-decision scrutiny. It was an opportunity for the committee to, to really understand what, what was going on and what was being proposed in terms of the new model before the Cabinet make a decision on that.
Thank you. It was a very good session, I think, actually, those members that attended and, and quite reassuring. So hopefully, there's, there's four recommendations there. So are we happy to take them? Any dissent? Okay, I'm happy to move from the chair. Do I have a second, councillor Carson? Thank you. All those in favour? Excellent. Thank you, thank you again. Reiterate the officer's comment, Daniel, please pass back your thanks to your team for their work there. Well, no, item 13 is election of fostering champion. And this, as you've heard, as we've gone through the meeting, this is going to be a really positive, you know, really important role going forward. And I think you've heard his voice quite a bit today and I think one person's put themselves forward and that's councillor Julian. When I say he's heard his voice quite regularly this afternoon, that, that's important. It shows the enthusiasm that's needed for this job and somebody that's going to really come and champion that, that voice. And I think. Oh.
You can vote if you want to formalise it.
Yeah, no, I, I'm moving to that. No, I, I am moving that. So we've had one, one person put their name forward, which was councillor Julian. I'm quite happy to, to move that proposal from the chair and, and councillor Carson second it. But obviously, I must offer it up. Is there any other people that would like to put themselves forward? No, that's great. That shows everybody's got confidence in you, Robin. So wish you well and we look forward to, to you, show of hands, yeah. Show of hands, there we are. Lots of time. There we are, that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, so that. Did you want to say something, Robin, yet?
Oh, thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you very much for having the confidence in me to move this forward because I feel that there's a lot to do. And I think we can fill some of the gaps that, for the, for the foster carers, which are absolutely key to, to looking after our vulnerable children and to be loved by, by the foster carers. And also, you know, we, I've heard when, when I went to one of the foster carers meetings where some of them that, that want to do fostering and felt that they weren't given the, the tools to do the job or lack of tools and, and a little Bible to find that when they're in, in crisis, that they need something to flick through to find out who they need, rather than get on the computer and say to the child, just wait there, we'll have a look and see what's going on. You need to get on the case. And some of them that have been so, the foster carers have been moaning so much. And you know what it is? If somebody keeps moaning and you don't take any notice, in the end they say, I don't want to know anymore. And we can't afford to lose them. So we need to be on board, we need to find out what is their problem and increase. I think one of them over there, one of the ladies over there said, you know, we want to increase as much as possible foster carers in our county. And I think we can do it and, and feel that our county is the place to look after the children. So thank you very much and let's see how we go forward. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you councillor Julian. Exactly. I think you proved my point. So that, and the first.
Thank you, councillor Julian. Just to add something that came up at our district council meeting at North Devon Council related to fostering, which I found encouraging, and I don't know what other districts are doing, it's being considered to give fostering families 100% council tax relief at North Devon Council because we're very aware that the need to encourage people to become foster carers and that there is financial pressure on that. So it hasn't been decided yet, it's going to Strategy and Resources. But it would be interesting, I think, to me to know whether that's already in place in other districts in Devon and whether it can be encouraged if it isn't.
Daniel can give us some feedback on that one?
I think we've been approached by North Devon just to potentially attend if you were, felt it was helpful in North Devon that the resources panel, I think they are leading the way in terms of district councils in Devon. And we really welcome the support they're proposing in terms of supporting foster carers and how we can work in a really innovative way to really value foster carers. And if councillor Julian was, would find it helpful, we have regular meetings with foster carers and councillor Jeffries might want to extend the invite to that regular meeting and explore how we could jointly ensure you've got lots of different places where you can both meet with different carers, but also share back any feedback so we can address concerns as well, which might.
Wonderful, mate. Yes, thank you. Yeah, I was, I think Daniel's, Daniel's got ahead of me there. I was going to say I've just very much welcomed councillor Julian. I can see his passion in this area and it'll really help to have some extra focus. And I think the suggestion that Dan's made about. And I think the suggestion that Dan's made about getting involved with the foster care forums and groups would be a really good thing. Good to have somebody else on board. Thank you.
Please do, yeah.
Yes, I'll be looking forward to that. And I think that we all communicate very well. And don't forget to email me, because I'm not the fantastic emailer that there is. But I can read it all and then we can get, get going. So it is important that we keep it all together and move it forward. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. I think, yeah, the North Devon thing is exciting. Just caveat it. It was a motion, it's going to Strategy and Resources, and they need to understand the costs, cost implications. But definitely a real will up in North Devon to, at the very least, offer a discount to fostering panel parents. I think very much like you say, those certainly Devon County Council fostering, foster parents. So, yeah, really, really important. Just to, for members, just to remember, following on from this, we've got a corporate parenting training scheduled for the 8th of December, 9:30 to 11 o'clock. So obviously, I think that, on this theme, that's a really, really important, important meeting for our committee members, being children's scrutiny. But the whole council, again, are corporate parents. So please reach out to those in your groups that are not necessarily on children's scrutiny to, to, they realise the importance that we all attend this, because they're all our eyes and ears, aren't they, right across the county? So it's really important. Is there anything you wanted to say further, councillor Jeffries, on that?
Just to, just to reiterate that, that, that opportunity on the, in December for the corporate parenting training, to spread, spread the word and get as many people along to that as possible. I think it's going to be a really useful session to give people more information about, yeah, that's, that's, that's here, isn't it? It knows a Teams one. Is it Teams?
Teams, I believe, Matt.
Teams, those.
Teams, teams.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Just, I think Teams gives everybody the opportunity to, to attend that. So even if they can't physically make it here. But I think that's going to be really useful to give everybody not only an idea of what their corporate parenting responsibilities are and clarify that, but also to give them some of the tools that they need to be able to make a real impact in their communities as well. So I think with yourself, yourself as foster champion, and I'm myself out, out there as well. But it's about getting all, for all of the councillors that we've got focusing behind this, and we can make a really big difference. Thank you.
But I think it'd be important that we send an email, actually a really short email, to all councillors, the importance of this and their role. But let's keep it short, because we know how many emails we get. And I think the shorter and the punchier it is, the better and the importance of the intent of that. Yeah, I just, I just want to, yeah, the members' bulletin, fine, but I just want to punchy one email, because, again, get so much to read. I'm just worried it gets lost in the members' bulletin or cheat. Obviously, we've got matters for information there at the end of the, the agenda. I take them as read unless anybody wants to raise anything from them. We don't have any other business, but anything that's burning in anybody's head, please do come and see me or Louise or any of the officers. And it gives me great pleasure to wish you all a wonderful weekend. And thank you. Well, I suppose it is from this committee. And I'm not saying that in November. There's no way I'm saying that. But I'm grumpy enough about Christmas as it is. No, seriously, have a good weekend and keep up the good work, everybody. And I say, really get out there, get in your community, speak to, speak to as many people as you can, so that we can, can come back and ask officers those questions, that whether it be teachers, foster carers, children themselves, young people, what, what they're asking, so that we, we can be those, that voice for them. So thank you all. And yeah, have a good weekend.